Hello, good evening everyone. We're gonna get started, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. The first thing is to review and approve the agenda. I don't think we have any changes that I'm aware of to the agenda. We did have one thing, at least added on the sheet, added to the consent agenda, but I think that is reflected online. So, without objection, we're gonna consider the agenda approved. No one has any thoughts on that? Okay. So we're gonna move on to general business and appearances. So this is an opportunity for anyone from the public to make comments on something that is not a part of our regular agenda for the evening. And if you will, try to keep your comments to about two minutes. And that's gonna be true for all of the public comments for tonight.
I would like to request-
Oh, here's your privacy statement, yeah. Thank you.
I'd like to request that the piece about the declaration of official intent for parking garage be pulled from the consent agenda and dealt with later when you deal with the garage because of this concept called rebuttable presumption that infers that a deal is already done when it's not.
We can pull that off. It's fine. Thank you.
You don't need to wait. We can explain that quickly.
Oh, we can. Okay, fair enough. Maybe we'll deal with that through the consent agenda. But we can talk about it then.
After.
Sure. Yeah. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Hope Patrero and I'm a junior at Montpelier High School. And I'm here to tell you all about the Race Against Racism, which I founded a year ago and is happening for the second time this year at Montpelier High School. The 5K Walk and Run will hopefully be through the city of Montpelier and the rally will be at Montpelier High School. And it's a fundraiser, but also just a community event to bring people together in the fight for racial justice. And our beneficiaries are Migrant Justice and Youth for Change. And the rally will include speaking performances and lots of great food and plenty of high school sports teams are running in the event as well. So I hope you all can make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anne, do you want to explain this?
Oh, yes. So Donna has this card, a cover system. So if, as you are talking, so we're hoping to keep people's comments to about two minutes. And so if you have one minute left, you're gonna see the orange card. And then if you are at two minutes, you're gonna get the red cards and then you know to stop. So, and I'll probably interrupt you at that point if that happens. All right. Thank you. Awesome. Right, so moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
With H pulled, right?
Sure.
Motion to approve with H pulled.
Okay, great. And you're still okay with that, Donna?
Yes.
Great. Any further discussion on any of those items? All in favor? Oh, yes, Donna. Sorry, Rosie.
I apologize for discussing one item when we normally don't discuss these. I did note that one of these is a street closure application with a noise variance that ends at midnight. We did receive a constituent comment, I think Donna and I received it, I'm not sure if everyone received it, from some folks who live in that neighborhood who are a little bit concerned about Langdon Street being closed and specifically that the noise ordinance would be waived for so late at night frequently. So I'm gonna go ahead and approve this in this instance, but I do want us to be a little bit more aware of being careful about downtown waiving the noise ordinance so frequently and thinking about are there ways to keep it at 10:00 AM, which I think is a little more reasonable.
PM.
10:00 PM.
Yep.
Yes. So just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's talk about H.
So item H is a statement of intent to bond. It doesn't bind you to anything. And the advantage of adopting that now is that obviously we don't know if we'll bond, A, whether you actually put it on a ballot, and B, if it passes. But if those things were to happen, if we should incur expenses, design costs, those kind of things, then they become eligible for the bond if they're done in advance of the bond vote after this resolution as opposed to only expenses after the bond. So it's a, it doesn't require you to bond. It doesn't require the voters to pass anything. It simply protects us for expenses. So I would recommend we do it.
Donna?
I'm sorry, Bill. Would you explain more how it protects us? I mean, it sets up our-
It protects us in that we can start, I mean, we're not gonna spend tons of money because we don't have the authority for money, but if we were to spend so-called soft costs, legal costs, or design costs, those kinds of things, in anticipation of, you know, preparing for a bond vote or putting together these things, then we can include those in the bond if we chose as part of the actual project cost. If we don't pass this resolution, then we can't. We just have to take them out of our general budget. We might choose to anyway, but it gives us that option. It doesn't require that we float a bond for anything.
Any further questions?
So I'll make a motion-
Okay, Donna.
-that we approve the non-binding declaration of official intent for the parking garage.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. And so moving on, so we recently talked about creating a social and economic justice advisory committee, so we have some appointments to that committee. I think I saw some people who have applied to that here, so if any of you would like to come introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about your interest in serving on the Social and Economic Justice Committee.
Do you have the Wi-Fi password?
I'll get it right now. Sorry. Caught up with that. Hi, I'm Michael Sherman. Let's see, I think probably the others think that it was later on the agenda, which is why some of them are not here. Anyway, I submitted an application, so I assume you've read it. And I'll just say that, I guess the skills and, the skills I bring are the skills of a historian. I've been a historian my whole professional life, except for stinted baking at the Mangies. And I just think that those are valuable and important skills in a situation like this where we have to gather information, assess it, evaluate it, and try to sort of use it in a way to go forward with the goals that the committee is charged with. I also wanted to say that I've, as you saw in my resume, I've spent a lot of time thinking, writing, and teaching about subjects either directly or indirectly related to this. And my feeling is that institutions reflect the values of the society that creates them. And I'd like to see what a committee like this can do to shore up those institutions, strengthen them, and correct the problems that we face.
Great. Thank you, Michael.
Thanks.
Anyone else here? Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Get closer.
Get closer. I'm Sidney Collier. I am here.
You have to get right up on top of it.
Just get a little closer.
Close. There you go.
Okay. I'm Sidney Collier. I hope you all read my application. I'm an immigration attorney, been focused on diversity my entire life, advocate for it, and really believe in the power of diversity to strengthen a community. I think that there has been a lot of polarization in the country, and I want to try to prevent that, both in the schools and in the community, and bring people together. Wasn't really prepared to talk today, so I'm happy to answer questions, but I really look forward to hopefully serving on this committee. You have some great applicants, so whoever is on the committee, I think will do a fantastic job.
Thank you. I didn't ask before, but any questions? No? Okay. Anyone else here from that pool? Okay, so we have five applicants for up to seven seats. I think we said one or two of them could be council members. So one hypothesis is that we can, we maybe don't need to go into executive session, but that's just a hypothesis. What would you all like to do?
I would happily appoint all five of our applicants to this committee.
So the only point that I will raise, and I propose this, and so one of the things that a few folks have asked about are special sort of, or seats reserved for particular groups across the state of Vermont. And I don't know that that needs to necessarily be discussed in executive session, but I really do want this to be the sort of committee that brings in those voices as well from organizations who are also engaged in the work. So I don't, I don't know what that looks like, or if that requires like some fine-tuning on the council piece to reserve those spots, or, but.
So this is a committee that we've created, right? So we can have as many people on it as we want. So, I mean, I guess my recommendation is we should see, actually, maybe that crew can think through who's missing from the table and who they'd like to invite intentionally into that group. What do you think?
Yeah, I think that would work.
Okay.
I just, I would hope that it happens sooner rather than later. And I guess that also is a question about council members as well on the committees. I don't know what that looks like either.
Connor, then Donna, yeah.
Well, I think we heard from somebody tonight who is young, interested in racial justice issues, and very articulate, so I would like to ask Hope to consider applying for this committee.
Would we take high school students on committees?
It's true.
So, just something to think about, Hope.
I will.
Not to put you on the spot.
Donna?
Well, I think for sure, and it was one of my concerns, that we make sure that we bring in resources from all the various groups that exist. But their commitment to the committee might not be the same as our residents. And that we can take the five that have applied tonight and we can add Hope and others as we, you know, entertain them or they entertain our attention. So I hope it stays open and fluid. So I'd make a motion that we accept the five candidates that have applied to be the initial beginning of this committee of, long name, Social Justice-
Social and Economic Justice Advisory.
Economic Justice. Social and Economic Justice Advisory Committee. That we appoint them for two years.
Second.
And appoint Hope as a student rep?
If Hope says yes, that would be great.
I just need more information. I'm actually glad they would, I just need more info.
Don't worry, there'll be time. Okay.
I don't think we have to force her to do it tonight.
We'll keep you on our mailing list so you'll know about the meetings.
All right, great. So we've had a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Unopposed? Sorry, I forgot we didn't, I didn't have further discussion. I apologize.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I certainly, I voted aye in favor of appointing everyone. I just, I want to really encourage the committee, which I'm, I don't know how we'll handle council appointments, but I really wanted to actually be a diverse group of folks as well. And the folks who have applied today are incredibly qualified. And I just hope that there's some outreach that happens, and I'm certainly happy to participate and engage in that to make this a diverse body as well in terms of folks that we are trying, you know, in terms of things, issues that we're trying to address. I want to bring in people who are directly impacted by, you know, a not living wage and all of those things. So I look forward to working with you, and I just, it's really important to me that we bring in those voices to city committees like this.
I think we haven't yet, did we appoint you to the committee? I think we should do that. Since we're in that process. Connor?
I'll make a motion to approve Ashley Hill as the council representative to this committee.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I didn't vote. I didn't think that would be appropriate.
Thank you, Ashley.
I could've voted no, I guess, or I could've declined, but.
All right, great. So, and I guess we'll leave it to either you, Ashley, or Jamie to coordinate the first meeting of that group.
Sure.
Perfect. Great. All right, the housing authority appointment. So here we have, I think, two people who have applied for one seat, so are either, I know Mary Alice Bisbee is here, I don't know Eric. Oh, great, great. All right, so if you'd both be willing to come up and introduce yourselves and tell us about your interest in this committee.
I don't know about that. I'm gonna shrink a little bit. My name is Eric Schulteis. I'm a staff attorney with the Office of the Healthcare Advocate at Vermont Legal Aid. So I'm interested in serving on this committee. In the past, you know, I have a focus, a legal focus on housing, low-income subsidized housing, both in law school and then in my practice for three years in California. Subsequently, I've been engaged on a different side of the question from the housing authorities perspective in my work with the Cambridge Housing Authority. And I think my real focus on social services generally and housing in particular is how to use data to create a responsive system. And a large part of that comes from a belief that social service agencies look at reporting requirements in evidence-based methods as a real burden, and to try to envision how it could be an opportunity and it can be leveraged for their purpose to better serve their clients. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know most of you, and I hope you have read my application, which somehow got lost for a while, but I think it did get in at the last minute. I have none of the qualifications of the other applicant. I am not a lawyer. I am an expert at downward mobility, having lived, having had the lived experience of such. I live in subsidized housing, under the Montpelier Housing Authority. I have some ideas of how some of the buildings could be made more energy efficient, and ideas about housing for young families. I know there are a lot of ideas, but if you want the lived experience, I have been a social worker in the past. I have a master's degree in gerontology, human service administration. I do not have a very long work history because people don't like to hire people when they're old, and I was a longtime homemaker back in the days. So thank you very much for considering me, and if you want somebody other than Jack McCullough to lead the group, I think you've got a good person in the other candidate.
Gosh, well, all right, thank you. All right, so for this one, because we do have two applicants for one seat, we probably should go into executive session, so we have a motion to that effect.
I'll move that we go into executive session for the consideration of an appointment to the Housing Authority Committee.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will be right back. I think we have to move to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We're coming out of executive session, that's the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great.
I move that we appoint Eric Schulteis to the Montpelier Housing Authority.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and thank you, Mary Alice, and to Eric. And we know that there's another seat that's gonna be coming open soon, so I hope to keep you involved somehow. All right, thank you. All right, moving on.
All right, we're just gonna get set up here for a second, so.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm getting myself together here. So the next item, which I suspect lots of people are here for, is the discussion on the parking garage. So we're gonna need a couple minutes, I assume, to-
I think we're actually in pretty good shape.
Okay. Are you presenting this from down there, Bill?
Yeah, because it doesn't reach to my seat, so.
I'm gonna move over that.
Okay. First, I'd like to say that Stephanie Hanley from Whitenbrook is on the conference call phone with us. Hi, Stephanie.
Hi, everybody.
So we can all hear Stephanie. I think she's gonna watch on the live stream, so be able to follow along and-
You wanna move your mic over, Bill?
Sure. It's kinda taped down here, as close as I can get it. Just get started. Oh, there we go, stereo. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, this is a discussion about the proposed parking garage. I did send you all a memo, and we posted it publicly last night. I wish we could've got it sooner, but some of the key terms weren't really settled or proposed to be settled until yesterday, so I apologize for that. I am not gonna wade through all of the detail from the memo, but certainly happy to answer any questions. Would like to hit the highlights. With any project, I think the key thing is one of the project goals. So our economic development strategic plan specifically calls for two things as major initiatives. One is new public parking and one is a new hotel, as well as affordable housing. So three of the major goals of our plan are all addressed to some extent with this project. The other project goal was to keep timing moving forward so that we could have a bond vote in November. That worked with the timing of the hotel project. So those have been the guiding principles. This is the design of the area with the smaller garage that was approved through our design review process, not the larger one, but you get the general idea. The white building is the new hotel. Behind it is the One Taylor Development with the bike path, and then you can see the parking structure next to the new hotel. And behind the church is a layout of where the proposed church housing would go, which is probably two or three years away, but has been accommodated in the project planning. So this is the big picture, sort of eye, look at this part of town and what may happen with it. The project that we're specifically talking about is the city's role in the parking garage. It would be a 348-space parking garage. The garage plus the surface parking at Capital Plaza will lead to 160 net new parking spaces in the city versus what's on that area of ground now. Key emphasis for this is that there's no property tax increase required. It's funded through the fees and permit costs for the garage, as well as TIF revenue, which I'll talk about in a bit. The land is being donated by Capital Plaza. We do not have an appraisal on it. Probably the range of prices is somewhere between, or values, excuse me, is somewhere between $350,000 and $700,000. The city will construct, own, operate, and manage the facility, so that's key. So we'll own the land, we will have it all. So this is a drawing of the larger facility from behind. You can see it does eke out into the Heaney Parking Lot, 60 State Street, in order to get the extra 150 spaces. The rest is the same as the design you saw from the front. Again, this is conceptual. This is, the external design is based on the design approved for the smaller garage, except that it expands the green walls further around. So that is something that can still be considered. So some financial assumptions were made in running the numbers on this project, and again, we had great assistance from Whitenbrook and Stephanie Hanley specifically, who are experts at this field. The assumption right now is the total project cost is $10 million. We feel like that is reasonable based on the construction quotes that we have, other costs that we've considered, all rolled in. So as I said, that includes cost of construction, design, obtaining permits, environmental work, et cetera. The assumption is that, obviously, we're basing it on what we know about current bond rates. Anything can happen between now and a vote, and when bonds are actually issued in this project, probably not till February or March at the earliest, so obviously that's a variable. The pro forma is based on a 30-year bond with the first four years of interest only, and then beginning to pay what we call declining principles. So your highest payment would be in year five and then declining thereafter. The assumption is that CPI would be 2.25, so all expenses as well as income has been adjusted by that throughout, the assumption being that they would all be adjusted by whatever the real amount was, but that was the number used. We are only allowed to use TIF revenue for 20 years, so even though there's a third-year bond, it only has TIF revenue for 20. One of the interesting pieces is in the VEPSE model, the Vermont Economic Progress Council, which approves TIFs, they do not allow you to increase the TIF value in your calculations that you do in real life. So this pro forma has assumed that the value and the tax bill to the hotel will remain the same for 20 years exactly, that we won't increase our tax rate, that there won't be any value change, et cetera. So that we use that same conservative calculation in our assumptions. So obviously, one assumes that that will grow. We also have no other TIF increment. Now, for those familiar with TIF, it is that within a certain district, any new property that's being developed, the value of the new addition can go into this tax increment financing fund. This assumes basically the increment only from the brand-new hotel. It doesn't assume any other projects, any other increment from other things. So again, we're being conservative. Obviously, other revenues in that district could be used for this. We'd prefer to save those for other infrastructure projects as necessary, but again, we sought to give it the most conservative look that we could. And we've built in, it starts at $50,000 and goes up by CPI, capital reserve funds included annually, which will of course be put into a reserve fund to be used when major maintenance and improvements and repairs are needed for the garage. So those are underlying financial assumptions.
Bill, what was the amount per year that goes into that?
$50,000 at the first year, then going up by CPI.
Okay.
So this is kind of everything all together. I'll try to break it all apart. This is a 20-year expanse projection. Rosie correctly noted that we really should look at this 30. I just didn't do 30 because it didn't really fit on the page as well, but it does show up in a later graph. Basically, the blue bars are the income, the red bars are the expenses, the gray line that goes across the bottom is the annual plus or minus, and the yellow line is the cumulative balance. So with the, as you can see, the first four years have no, are interest only with the bond, so that revenue greatly exceeds expenses, and that is basically stored up because the next five years, as the highest payments of the bond hit, we use that reserve to stay in a positive cash mode for the entire project. And you can see around 2030, it starts to even out and then slowly, you know, at that point, you're looking way out, but at that point, the garage is really covering its own costs. Where does the money come from? I'm gonna break this down further, but basically about 19% of it is the TIF revenue. Again, we assume that 148 for all 20 years. This is, I took the year 10 average just because of the, all the dealing with the bond, you know, how do you pick one typical year? So I said at the end of the first 10 years, this is the average projected revenue on an annual basis and the average projected expenses. And similarly with the income, the, there is a, the 103 is not labeled, that's operating costs. So that would be the cost of annual maintenance, cleaning, electricity, that sort of thing. The capital reserve is the market, and then the debt service, of course, is far and away the largest expense for the garage. So as you can see, that's, of 10 years, we're averaging about $730,000, taking in on average about $780,000. So here's the projected net income over 30 years, a five-year increment. So again, looking at the annual versus expenses, and these are the averages. So again, looking at the annual versus expenses, and these are the averages, not, because again, there's no one typical year. So you can see, at five years, we're in great shape. 10 years, it's, you know, now it's closer to the bone, as we discussed, and I don't know what just happened.
Uh-oh. Shocked the projector.
Oh, come on, come on. All right.
Wow.
And then 15, and then you can see further out, things, as the bond starts dropping off, there is a, as the bond starts dropping off, then the income starts showing stronger. So here's a full 30-year run, where you can see the annual versus the cumulative, and again, once you get out beyond 20 years, you're, you know, it's pretty speculative, but the two areas, I pointed out, the first one in 2024, that is the first year of the full bond payment, so that's where you can see the dip in the annual cash flow. When you get out to 2030, that's when it starts hitting positive again, and then another dip is in 2039, when the TIF revenue ends, and then after that, you can see. So forgetting the cumulative line, you can see in the out years, it shows pretty steady that it's covering its costs. Where's the money coming from? So as I mentioned, the Capital Plaza is donating the land. They will also be paying market rate permits, permit fees. Once we negotiated everything, looked at all the costs, we settled on $125 per month. They will purchase 200 permits and pay for those for a 30-year lease. Again, their permits can increase by CPI if necessary, so that's a pretty substantial commitment to this project. They will not necessarily use all 200 of them on a given day. Conference days, wedding days might require the use of all of them, but they will be paying for them regardless of their use. That's not unlike people that have permits in our parking lots right now. You might buy a monthly permit in one of our parking lots, and you take a week's vacation, you still have the permit, you just didn't use the parking spot, and someone else is parking in your place and paying for it. We expect to, we project to sell 80 other permits to other users at longer, you know, so more permanent-type users, probably not 30 years, but maybe five years type thing, and those would be at the same rate. Our goal is to keep all the commercial users at comparable rates. We will allocate in our spreadsheet, doesn't start this until year three or four because of that project, but we've accommodated the possible need for 30 units for the affordable housing project at $50 a month, and that is factored in after year four. So that was the change from the regular commercial rates. 38 open spaces, those are just unaccounted for. Even if all the permit holders were in, there would be 38 open spaces. $80 a month estimate is based on really what we see for daily rates and usages at our other parking lots, so that was how that was modeled. We did a lot of work, particularly those in downtown. We had to discount out things like Stonecutter's Way and other areas, but the core downtown lots, that's about what we get per space. I call that red, because one of the key aspects of the finances of this, and we should be clear about this, is what we call flex spaces. And so that's the space that's used basically twice or more. So Capital Plaza pays for permit, their hotel guest comes in in the evening, stays overnight, leaves in the morning. That leaves that space open for the day, and so someone in downtown Mopelia might park there for the day, perhaps even someone working there might park there for the day. Typically, for these garages, as we've looked into them, 40 to 50% flex is considered the standard. We used 30 to be conservative until we had aspect of it, but an astute resident looked at my memo and sent me an email at 7 o'clock this morning and said, you know, you've got 400 and some odd spaces in a 300 and some odd space garage, and so it was a good question, and I wanted to be sure to call that out, that they don't add up, and we have to, so we are double counting spaces, and that is intentional, it's not by accident. Additionally, the TIF revenue from the garage, which we've explained, again, being held constant, this is all based on first-year pricing. So that's the breakdown of where revenue would come from the garage, the expenses, as I explained, are operating costs, capital reserve, and the debt. Additional benefits to this project, in discussion with Capital Plaza, they are creating around 60, I think the number is maybe as many as 68 parking spaces, surface parking, and did not have a specific plan, so in discussion, we decided that we would continue, we currently lease about 50 spaces from them in their parking lot now. So the city would continue with lease, using the same lease terms, 50-plus-or-minus number to be finalized, surface places for public parking. So these would also be additional public parking, probably short-term parking, that would be available in downtown, in addition to the longer-term parking in the garage. So that is a nice addition to town. The design also calls for an ADA-compliant bike path connection and park area adjacent to the garage between the hotel that's accessible from the road, so it would be a really great place for people to connect with the bike path, obviously for hotel guests, but also people who park in the garage, and residents who wish to use it, a place to rest from your bikes. The design even includes having some bike repair tools in there, and we, you know, perhaps we would talk to a local vendor about renting bicycles or something, so there's a lot of opportunity there. This is the site plan, it's very site-plany, but what you can see, all in blue is the surface parking. You can see that the road comes in off of Taylor, so the right at the top is the current Capital Plaza, in the back is the new hotel, and again, the smaller garage, we don't have all the plans with the larger garage, but the layout is very similar. So you can see there's a roadway coming in from Taylor, and then it makes a 90-degree turn left to go to State Street, that is also the direct access to the parking garage. We would have, that would either become a city street, or we would have a permanent right-of-usement easement with the Capital Plaza to make sure there's always public access to our garage. The rest are the surface parking areas that we would be leasing for public use. The Plaza would reserve a few for some of their tenants who need reserved spaces and otherwise, but the rest would be leased by the city. If you look at the lower portion, you can see the bike path, that is the easement the city's already purchased, and where the bike path will be connecting, and then next to that, now I apologize, it's not that clear, but that is there, that whole green area is where the bike path connection would be made, so that people can come in, and I think you go through the garage and come out and have that connection there. And there's also a pathway between the hotel and, so access to the, and I could be wrong about that, but anyway, there is direct access, so that is the site plan currently. Concerns and risks. One of the questions you hear a lot is, you know, you're making, what is the garage gonna look like? As I said, presently, we're working with the garage design that was approved already through the design process. Doesn't mean it can't change. I mean, there are certain, probably have a price point where our pro forma stock's working, but certainly, we welcome input if people were interested in looking at the design, as long as we do it in a timely and cost fashion, but we certainly want to make it, is it gonna be a major structure in downtown. The selection of contractors, I put this in the memo, I'm not gonna go into detail, but we are, I am recommending that we move forward with DEW as our contract, construction manager. They have, they are already our contractors for One Taylor, they are the contractors for the hotel. Their services for One Taylor were acquired through a federally mandated bid process, and they've agreed to hold those terms for us on this project, so that they were procured that way. I think, given the logistics of working in the tight area and economies of scale with all these projects, I think we should move ahead with them, rather than taking the time to perhaps get a competing contractor in there. One thing I'll say about their processes, they're a construction manager, so they still bid out all the subwork, and the contract calls for us to see all those bids and participate with them in selecting the individual concrete pourers and electrical contractors, those kind of things. What they're bidding is their fee on top of all of that, which was very reasonable. So, and similarly, the architect, Rabidou Associates from Waterbury, they have designed the garage and the hotel to date, and have the work and knowledge in, and it's, we are negotiating with them now about continuing that. It seems to make more sense than going out, hiring a whole new architect and engineering firm to design something that's three-quarters designed already. One of the things that's come up is reduced car use in the future. What happens if people don't use as many cars and we're building a garage? And of course, none of us know the future, but to the extent that there are cars at all, and there are some cars, we have the opportunity to shift cars from other places into the garage and use, so we can take on-street parking and make more parklets, or flowers, or public gathering places. We could take some of our surface parking, develop that into businesses, or more green space. So while reduced car use is certainly something we need to look for, unless we assume it's going to go away, and it's entirely, we see this is the, sort of the last place people would park. We would constantly put people in there, so that there would be a use for it. The other concern, of course, if you can't secure the additional parking permit holders, we do have some interest from some major employers in the community that we've talked with. We obviously haven't finalized any deals with them, waiting to see whether we're going forward, but I would say that we, our budget calls for 80 permits to go in, and we already issued 51 permits in our parking lots around town now, so there's certainly a demand for close to the full amount, and given the level of interest we've had, we think we can get the 80 permits that we need. And the other risk is the flex spaces. We don't know how, you know, we've based the assumption conservatively, we think it works, based on what we know. And one of the, one of the interesting pieces of this is that if the Capital Plaza and the Hampton Inn are as successful as we all hope they would be, they might be using their 200 spaces all the time, which would be great, because that's the point of the project, but then those flex spaces wouldn't be as available. But that isn't what usually happens with hotels and conference business, and so we think we have a reasonable projection here. Nonetheless, I wanted to call that out. Contingencies. These are things that obviously, we can't go forward without. Obviously, I mentioned earlier the current financial assumptions, if there were a giant spike in interest rates, we'd have to rethink things. If there were giant changes in costs, obviously, we'd have to rethink things, but as it lays out now, it works. VEPSE approval of the TIF district, next Thursday is our meeting with them, our final hearing. We don't have any reason to believe we won't be approved, but as you can see, $150,000 a year in TIF money is critical to this project, so if our TIF district were not to be approved, then we would not be able to go forward with this project. Council approval of the project, and going ahead and putting a bond vote on. If you don't say, "Let's go," and you don't vote to put a vote on, a bond vote on the ballot, then it's not gonna happen. So that is a contingency, and then obviously, even if you do support it and put it on the ballot, and it still has to pass the voters before it is done. And of course, like anything, although the current plan has, is permitted, the new garage is not, so we would be needing to amend our existing permits, because it's going on to a neighboring lot, we'd need to deal with that. So those are all contingencies that could stop this from moving forward. Key next steps, securing the contractors, I just described those. The third contractor is Desmond. They are pretty much a sole source people, they do the specialized parking management systems. I didn't talk a lot about that, but we're proposing to use what's called a smart garage system, that is what tracks people in, knows how many spaces are in the garage, knows how many have been used out of a certain allotment, so how many Capital Plaza spaces are left versus how many general spaces are left, those types of things, how many other permit holders are in, and assigned spaces, and will indicate when the garage is full, if there are, you know, we'll know if someone's gonna be using it later. It's a very sophisticated system, it's being used in St. Albans, Brattleboro, and Rutland perhaps, and is currently the state-of-the-art in Vermont. Securing the additional parking commitments that I just talked about, the other permit holders. Completing the design, we have, as I said, we have a design for our smaller garage, but we still have to complete a design for which construction bids and things can be obtained. We have permit, I call myself as doing this, just as an aside, is that we're talking about permits as, in terms of regulatory permits, but we're also talking about parking permits. So hopefully, that's not confusing everybody, but we have regulatory permit applications to complete and a process to go through, and of course, public outreach and information of which this is the first major step. Opportunities for public participation include our meeting tonight, council meetings in September and October. We have to choose, the council has a window between October 27 and October 7, when they can warn a special election and choose what to put on the ballot, so there will certainly be one special meeting for that purpose. The council may choose to take this up at other meetings between now and then, but certainly, people can participate. Once, if it is warned and we go forward, there will be a public information hearing in October, only for articles that are on the September ballot. So right now, we're talking about as many as two bond votes and as many as two charter changes.
The November.
There may be less of either.
November ballot.
November, I'm sorry, right. Public hearing will be the end of October, thank you, Rosie, yes, the November ballot. As I mentioned, this has to go through permitting, so the Design Review Committee and Development Review Board permit hearings, that people can weigh in. We had good participation on these hearings when the original hotel concept was going through, and we will be regularly updating the web, Facebook, Front Porch Forum, Bridge, et cetera, for public to get information, and certainly welcome for any other suggestions for public participation that would be helpful to people, certainly willing to do a special work, you know, staff workshop or something for people that want to learn more and/or influence the decision or process. So the schedule, we have tonight's meeting, there is, the council will have to call a special meeting between those dates to decide on bond vote and any other special election vote. We must hold a public information meeting between the dates of October 27 and November 5, and then the bond vote on November 6, if this all goes forward. So that would be the sort of formal public council schedule, there's plenty on the to-do list for us, but willing to take any questions or comments. Stephanie can take questions to any of us, I think there's members of the Capital Plaza that are here, and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I'll leave this up in case anyone wants to refer to a slide.
I guess I'll stay here then. So the way I pictured this part going is I'd love to start with council questions, comments, thoughts, ideas from you all, and then open it up for public comments and questions. John? John, can we turn the lights?
It's roasting, please.
Yeah, it's fine. We can still sort of see it. All right, so council, thoughts, questions? Oh, sure.
I have many, Mayor Watson.
Do you want to go first?
I would love to. So I'm a no on this, and I think I've been very loud about that for quite some while now. I don't think that the public was sort of brought into this process early enough on. I also followed back in 2014, and a little bit before that, the push to bring a second hotel to town, which was met with significant opposition from the Capital Plaza, which I can appreciate and understand. They said that they didn't think there was enough business to sustain two hotels, then when 2016 comes around, then, you know, then apparently, a feasibility study was done for a second hotel, and a direct quote that was given to the media was, "And well, isn't it, and what, isn't it better for me to have it than somebody else?" This, I see, is a project that is benefiting one entity in particular, and I realize that there is the argument for the public good of parking, but I significantly question what kind of public good parking actually is. We have made a commitment as a city to work on reducing our carbon footprint, and I think that this significantly increases it. Additionally, one thing that I'm really concerned about is the fact that raw sewer, like, overflows into our river, and we have approved, is my understanding, a request to bond to provide significant revenue for upgrades to a water recovery facility here in town, and we need to make those upgrades. I mean, those are infrastructure upgrades that we have to spend money on in order to be able to build housing and to sustain all of the things that we are trying to do here, which, and my math is a little rough, but I'm pretty sure that puts us at about $26.5 million if we were to bond both projects fully. And I know that the water recovery plan is in two phases, so we may be able to bond separately for all of those, but my goal as a city council member is, one, to include our community in our development, and this was a plan, I read about it in the paper, and admittedly, I was new to the council, and to me, it sounded like a done deal when the press release came out, and there was this big ribbon cutting with Phil Scott there, and it seemed like it was a done deal, and then it sort of came to light that all of these other things needed to happen, and then that, oh, city council is gonna need to approve this plan. And I have thoughtfully listened to arguments on both sides, and I just, I cannot support a proposal that didn't include community input upfront. I appreciate that now that the proposal is put I appreciate that now that the proposal is put out there with sort of a very defined place and defined parameters, that, that now the public is being asked for comment. But to me, that was a fundamental misstep, and, and the public should have been brought in on this procedure far, far sooner than they were. And I, I just cannot sit here as a council member and say that I support developing between 300 and 350 new spaces when we are trying to reduce reliance on fossil fuels and are trying to find alternatives to, to carbon.
Thank you. I have lots of thoughts on that, but I'm--
Okay, can I just offer one--
Yeah, sure.
Quick, I don't want to rebut Councilmember Hill. I appreciate her opinion. I just want to be clear, one thing we have not committed to bonding for the wastewater plant yet. That's on the next meeting, and we don't, that may or may not be going forward. Secondly, just technically, it would not be the same money. So whether we, this is coming from parking revenue and TIF revenue, none of which would be eligible to be used for the wastewater plant, so that--
But the city's on the hook either way.
That's correct.
So it could--
But I just want to be clear that we're not taking money from one to pay for the other.
But we are asking, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on this then, but we are, in essence, asking taxpayers to assume the risk that, that if we are unable to generate sufficient revenue to cover--
That's correct.
--those payments, and, and I, that would be, I would be derelicting my fiduciary obligation to the city to support both projects, and to me, infrastructure like a water recovery facility is far more critical than, than this particular plan.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Donna?
So we disagree.
We do. That's okay. It's where the most growth comes from.
I guess for me, I remember when Tom was sitting over there, Tom Galanga, and he had to recuse himself because we were discussing Capitol Plaza here in public two or more years ago. So I don't feel that I have, at least I have felt the discussion has been there, it's been open, and what you read in the paper is in the paper. I guess I take more meat into what happens here. And I'm sorry that you feel like we snuck it up on the public because that's not our intention, nor is how I feel has been revealed. And particularly then within the TIF, again, we talked about it in detail, and we had some estimates of costs, and I do feel like the vision for me is coming back to the Main Street scoping study, the Green of America capitals, the complete streets, and that if I want to see less pavement, then I got to get parked cars off the street. If I want to have more bikes, more pedestrian room, and more trees, then I feel the vision is really important to get the parking cars collected. I'm not a parking garage fan, but I'm really a fan of getting them off the streets.
And I agree with you there.
So to me, this is why I support this project, and I, and I do feel like the staff has been very conservative in revenue, and it is a risk. You're absolutely right. The wastewater treatment recovery, that's going in a huge different direction of trying to use our waste to create energy. And whether that goes forward or not, I see that in a different pot and venue. So it's just a different perspective. That's all.
No, and I want to be clear that I, I agree that we need to, to sort of put parking in a place. I just, I question whether or not this is the place. And I do have a quick follow-up question.
Sure. Before you go, is there any other thoughts?
I'll speak at some point, but I can go after Ashley. I'm not--
I just have a question.
Sure.
How far from the river would, would the closest point be of this new structure?
I'd have to go back. Can we find, there's, it's toward the beginning. It's the one that shows the rear view. Again, it's conceptual, so I'll answer it that way. Keep going. No, not that one. It's a drawing.
It's like a 3D.
Yeah.
Keep going. It's near the beginning.
Yeah, it is.
Sorry, guys. That one?
That one, yep.
Sorry, guys.
So this is the, this is the Kiwi parking lot, 60 parking, so we can't really, so north branch comes down this way, down here. This is One Taylor over here. I can't tell you the number of feet, but that's the perspective. This is the Christchurch.
Wasn't there another picture that showed the river also?
Yeah, that's true. Well, it would be the site plan, but that was with the smaller garage. This is the only drawing we have with the perspective of larger garage.
And this is Act 250 exempt because it's in a designated downtown area?
I don't know the answer to that.
You want to speak in your mic?
I apologize. I asked if this was Act 250 exempt because it's in a designated downtown area. I thought that--
I believe that's the case, but I don't know for sure.
So have we done any impact studies about what creating this much change to that area means in terms of like environmental impact?
We have to do all of that for our own local permitting, and we have to do, you know, a lot of that was done for the initial proposal. Remember, the, the 200-unit garage and all of the other, well, everything except for the Christchurch housing has already been through permitting, One Taylor and all those kind of things, so they've all taken that into account. So we would simply be updating information for going to the larger structure and finding, you know, again, that's a concept, finding the exact best dimension, you know, locations for it. But we have, you know, you have to do that. It's obviously, we would want to. It's in the city's best interest.
Glenn?
It's uncomfortable for me to be at all in favor of building a parking garage. That's not something that I ever thought that I would be in favor of, and I'm unsettled in my support, but I am in balance on, on Donna's side of this. My sense is that while I would love for there to be enormously fewer cars in, in the city to the point where we would not need any parking or, or completely minimal, I don't see that happening in the near future. And one potential good future would include a lot of electric cars, which will still need to be parked. I also hear the argument that Ashley made about the timing of this and the, the perception about Capitol Plaza as the initiator in some ways. At the same time, I think that this is an opportunity that we have to solve a problem that has been a problem for the city for a long time and do it in partnership with two entities, Capitol Plaza and the state through the TIF, that may not, that opportunity, that kind of opportunity may not arise again in the near future. It's certainly, I hear all the risks, and I, again, I'm not thrilled to be in favor of a parking garage, but I am at this point.
So I'm going to interrupt our process because I think one of the things that might be useful now is if there's any questions from councilors at this point, and then let's go to the public for comments, and then we can make sort of any other, like further statements that we want to make after that. Does that sound okay, team?
Yes.
Yes. So any further questions from councilors? Yeah.
So these are things that I think I'd heard from you earlier, Bill, but I didn't hear them tonight, and I couldn't remember, and I thought they'd be helpful. What's our projected lifetime of the garage, assuming that there's still need for it? Like, how long do we think a concrete parking garage lasts without needing major--
I believe 40 years.
Okay. And, you know, with the understanding that our parking situation and car situation may look very different in 40 years, but that's a, a good thing to hold in our heads. And then we--
We're built as structuralists who can handle the hovercraft.
We had talked at one point about what our contingencies were in the case that construction costs were very different than they are right now, given where we are with tariffs and steel prices and all kinds of construction prices going all over the place. You know, I, I think it would be helpful for folks to know what our backout options are should we go out to, should our contractor go out to bid and find things are just, the numbers are totally different than we thought they would be.
Correct. Stephanie, do you want to try to answer that?
Yeah, so, you know, I guess the question is, are you concerned about the construction pricing? Well, let's just say, we're, we have to get those construction numbers firmed up at the time of entering construction, and at that time, they will bid the, bid the project, you know, we're talking within the next three to five months to bid all of that work out. So we built in a couple of different contingencies. The contractor built in a contingency, and we added a contingency. So I think we're okay in that respect, and I think we'll just, we will know a lot more before we actually take out the debt.
So our, our ultimate, you know, backout option is that we just decide not to bond for this. Even if we have approval to bond, we can decide not to take out the bond if we decide that this is just not--
You don't have enough money, right. The other, the other avenue, and I, I'm looking at Capitol Plaza people, but you know, and we've, we've talked openly about this, they're, they're facing the same situation where their hotel, they're, they're working on projected costs, and they're, you know, they're going to have to make some key financial decisions, putting themselves on the hook for, I think, $16 or $17 million. And so, you know, we're in it together in, in that regard, but we can also look at the parking rates if, if we need to adjust, I mean, you know, as long as we're, if that's what hap-- you know, that's another source of funding to help, help make the project work. So I mean, that is another contingency, but right, at the end of the day, if it becomes, you know, if it becomes $12 million instead of $10 million, then it's, the parking rates aren't going to work, the bond isn't going to work, then I would suspect the hotel's not going to work. So it doesn't happen.
And what's our contingency should the hotel decide that their project doesn't work? I mean, I assume that they kind of move forward together, but there's, we don't, the TIF doesn't happen if the hotel doesn't happen, so we've got to--
That's correct. And obviously, we, we would have a development agreement with them, and, and the contractor, you know, isn't going to start our project unless they've got, go ahead to start their project.
Okay.
Another advantage of using the same contract.
Ashley?
And maybe I misunderstood what Stephanie said, but Stephanie, did I hear you say that we would need to go forward with putting together bids and getting contractors lined up in the next three to five months?
Well, from now, we're talking about three months, I guess, until the bond, until the vote happens. So I'm saying over the course of the next few months, we're not going to be able to get the bid in until we get the actual, well, we'll be prepping all of that, but we have to kind of wait for that November vote, so.
Right. Okay. So, so in theory, then, none of that, well, obviously, nothing could happen before then, but it, I guess I, my sort of question is, is that the best use of city resources in that time when there are lots of other projects that are also ongoing, and I know that city staff is already sort of at capacity? And I just, it's, it's, it's just another thing I think that we should be aware of, that it's going to take significant resources to, to do those things.
Okay. Any other further questions from, oh, yes, Jack?
I had communications from a couple of constituents, sort of along the lines of what Ashley was saying, not exactly saying, well, what's the rush? Why should the city be doing this kind of thing on the timetable of the developer? And so I'm just curious about what, what negative consequence could flow from saying, well, we're just going to slow down and, and not proceed at this time because people have not had, had time to digest this.
I think, you know, I can, Capitol Plaza folks can answer for themselves. I understand they've got, you know, a contractual obligation to begin work in November, December, something like that, or they lose their franchise agreement. Obviously, they're not going to start unless they have some assurance that a parking garage is coming in. While that's true, this is being driven somewhat by that, that schedule, it's also the opportunity, you know, to answer the question earlier, you know, a private developer came forward with a project that met several community priorities that had been previously identified, and it was an opportunity to address a bunch of needs at once, and sometimes when you're doing economic development projects, you have to move them when, when the opportunity presents itself. And then I think from a, just a logistics standpoint, even if, even if the financing were all figured out, you know, building the garage and then coming, I mean, the hotel and then sort of coming in later with a open functioning hotel and building a new garage next to it with guests there and all that, and, you know, wedging into that back corner behind, it just doesn't, you know, I think it just makes a lot more sense to build them sequentially and, and at the same time. So I think there's, there's that argument, you know. But, you know, there's no question. I mean, we, we wouldn't be taking this on despite all the talk about the, the parking, but the, the TIF and an anchor tenant makes it possible. I mean, let's not forget, you know, I, it's something like $300,000 a year in permit fees that the Capitol Plaza is paying for parking rights in there, as well as donating the property and the TIF revenue, so that's another $150,000. So, you know, directly or indirectly, they're contributing $550,000 a year to the success of this project. So that's what makes this possible, to, to address a, a larger community need.
Thanks.
Donna?
I thought the hotel also made our TIF application stronger.
Yes.
They're looking for projects that are real. So to me, the TIF timing is also really a key element.
Okay. Further questions? Okay, so we want to open it up to the public. So again, if you would try to keep your comments to two minutes, and Donna's going to help us there to keep track of time. So if you have anything you'd like to say about this, now's the time.
I don't know if I can keep it to two minutes, but I will do my best.
Well, thank you, Stephen.
Stephen Whitaker, Montpelier. From a planning perspective, it's fundamentally wrong to be having this garage location driven by one beneficiary. The phrase privatize the profits and socialize the costs comes to mind. The planning process of how soon, how open a process we had to decide where a parking garage should go is fundamentally deficient. This should not be driven, and I note the irony of you also talking about a Confluence Park waterway on the same night, on the same agenda, and this runs, this project, if approved going forward, would hogtie the full purpose of the Confluence Park. I mean, I quote from the document linked in Agenda for the later item on the Agenda. "The, the river is now seen as a positive attraction where clean water and attractive riverbank is an essential element of the quality of life and future economy, and to a strong desire to transform the character of the riverfront from the edge of a parking lot to gracious riverside promenade." Here you are threatening to put a four-story albatross of concrete, a budding, who's going to want to go and snake their way around behind this parking garage to go to our, our park?
The park will be way down--
It's contradictory. It's fundamentally contradictory to the options that should be available to your waterfront park. There are, there is a need for parking. The logical place to put parking is in the pit from the pavilion all the way to the sheriff's office. That will take some logistics to organize among the federal building and Vermont Mutual. But that is the only sound place for a project of this scale. If you go to these other towns, I've got, I have in other states and in Brattleboro, these are, $100,000 is grossly insufficient for maintenance. These garages become urinals and, and, and collect carbon, you know, they need steam cleaning regularly. This is not, this is not well thought out, and it's being driven by one private interest and with inadequate planning by the city council. I would ask you to think about your legacy as councilors, to have this on your conscience and on your reputation.
Thank you, Stephen.
I have two comments, just informational comments. One, the maintenance costs were taken from other garages.
That are poorly maintained.
Well, that's a matter of opinion. Secondly, we did do several studies for parking garage locations over many, many years. Parking garage locations have been looked at, at infinitum, and the actual Four One Taylor and the Capitol District Plan, the two most prime locations are identified. One was this location, the other was actually behind here, the Jacobs parking lot, and I remember having a, back, I see Nancy Sherman here, we had many discussions over which one of those was preferable, but this, this was identified through a pretty extensive planning process as one of the prime parking garage locations in the city.
Thank you. Paul?
Hi, I'm Paul Carnahan. I live on Saban Street. First, a, a comment and then a question. The comment is that I agree with Councilor Hill's summarization of the process. There was not the, or there was the impression that-- There was not the, or there was the impression that the hotel and the garage, as approved, were a done deal and everyone was happy and it was going to happen. So if it had been thought that this was a city project for a garage all along, someone should have come forward and said, hey, wait a minute, this is a city project, not, not a private project. So I think the process has, has been flawed. My question regards something that hasn't been brought up yet, which is traffic. I assume there was some sort of traffic study done for the smaller garage, I don't know if those are just automatically updated, but I was also just, from a layman's perspective, I was wondering what the traffic flow was that's being proposed? If it's a one-way traffic flow going in one side and out the other, or if it's going to be two-way? And what sort of, what sort of traffic control devices you're looking at, at those two major streets? Because we are now putting a lot more cars in one place than had been originally proposed.
So to answer your second question, we will have to, there was a traffic study done for the smaller garage, and it will have to be updated with the new information, that's correct. The current thought is it would be two-way, but that will be looked at to see if that makes sense. The other key issue, and I'm now, Tom McArdle's going to come up and smack me here because I'm going to misstate, but he gave me a quick primer this afternoon, that the key issue is the timing of when people come and go, so it's not like three hundred and fifty spaces, cars are all going to be leaving at the same time. You've got hotel guests that check in and leave at different times than workers and residents and those kind of things, so that's one of the, there's a science to estimating that. So that will all have to be looked at, and I am not qualified to give you that answer, but that will be part of the permit process, is amending, amending this. I think, just to answer the criticism, which is fair, I think, is the garage was initially proposed as a private garage, and that is what went through permitting, but I also will say that I believe it was said pretty early on that it needs to happen with TIF, and that it should, you know, really for it to be successful, it's going to have to be larger. And I know that the council's had several conversations about that since spring, and I think sometime this summer, I tried to write an article for The Bridge, sort of laying out what we were talking about, so people knew this was coming. So if people feel like we weren't open enough, I guess you could always be more open, but I know certainly the intent was to communicate that as clearly as possible. I also recall Paul out for being the sharp-eyed citizen that emailed me at seven o'clock this morning about the, I appreciate it, that was a great question, I will do, so thank you.
Further questions, comments from the public?
John Snell. First off, I want to thank Bill for the hard work that you put in clearly on this, moving this along, and I, for one, don't feel blindsided. It, you know, the changes have been a bit abrupt at times, but understandable. I also want to thank the Bishara family for working hard on this. I was a tenant of theirs for years, and I know that they're in it to make money and they're part of the community, and they couldn't be making money unless they were part of the community. This is a significant piece of infrastructure, it will require maintenance. I'm concerned about whether we can add another thing to the city that needs to be maintained, and I guess we've woken up about other aspects of the infrastructure, and I just hope that this one's on the radar so that it is maintained, because it would be a disaster if it weren't. I'm not too concerned about traffic management for the same reason, Bill, you just mentioned. I am concerned that there, that much of the traffic, much of the parking will be warehouse, basically warehoused cars, and I had always hoped that, that's, that's nothing.
We have one minute.
Okay. I had always hoped that we could warehouse cars outside of town, but quite honestly, that's the same sort of a problem, just pushed outside of town. So we are going to warehouse some cars there. I am thrilled at the possibility of freeing up street parking and replace, putting it in this damn parking garage. I can imagine that at part of the Confluence Park, for instance, that we get to grab those thirty-some parking places that are associated with Taylor Street, put them in the parking garage and actually have a decent-sized park there. Two quick things, one is, I'd like to investigate the possibility of going up one more floor versus wider, and also to go flat versus angled, so that in forty years, we potentially have a building that could be renovated into housing. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Yes?
Dan Groberg, executive director of Montpelier Alive. Montpelier Alive and the Montpelier Business Association strongly support this parking garage and encourage the council to move forward with this project. It serves several community needs that have been identified over the course of many decades, and we have a unique opportunity here. We have an opportunity to provide convenient parking for visitors to Montpelier while enabling creativity with existing parking spaces, including the possibility of developing other surface parking into new productive buildings. I think, while I would love to envision a possibility where there are zero cars in Montpelier, I think that's an unrealistic vision, and the, I think there will always be at least three hundred and fifty cars coming into downtown Montpelier, and if we could eliminate all the other parking in Montpelier and only have three hundred and fifty cars, that would be an amazing vision. I think this enables a hotel project that is going to bring thirty thousand meals a year to downtown Montpelier. The economic impact to downtown is significant in enabling this new hotel project. It's going to enable affordable housing, it's going to enable possibly future development in the area, and it's, it's just a tremendous, it will be a tremendous asset for downtown. We've been trying to increase tourism in terms of the carbon impact. We all know the impact of people driving around in circles trying to find a parking spot, so if there's a convenient garage that's well-labeled and well-marked, people will go to it with any wayfinding that we'll have, I promise. You know, I think it's a really great opportunity to lay out a future for the economic development of this city, and I strongly encourage, and the Montpelier Alive and the Business Association strongly encourage you to move forward with this project, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Hi, I'm Eve Jacobs-Carnahan, and I live in Montpelier.
Closer.
Closer.
I'm Eve Jacobs-Carnahan. I definitely understand that, and have been around for many, many years and seen the city talk about the need to solve parking problems. There can be disagreement about what the extent of those problems are, but what I'm concerned about is that this appears to be a situation where a project has been put forward by a private developer, and everybody is saying, oh, that's it, that's the solution, instead of an analysis and an examination of, is this the best solution? Is this the best way to put for, put at risk ten million dollars of taxpayer bond, bond money? And I don't, I'm not hearing an analysis of who this parking garage is for, like, is it for commuters? Is it for shoppers? Is it for tourists? And the answer to those questions might suggest that you have a different type of parking garage, or you have it in a different location, because if it's for state workers who are commuting, maybe it shouldn't be in this location, maybe it should be more on the periphery, like many of the plans have been put forward, such as the winning Bridges proposal for net zero. And then the other thing is, we're talking, so it's, I'm understanding from the presentation and from just reading the one memo last night and seeing the newspaper, is that the net gain to the city for public parking is a hundred and sixty spaces? So I think we're talking about spending ten million dollars to get a hundred and sixty spaces? And is that the right way to look at this? Maybe we should be spending ten million dollars to get four hundred spaces, none of which would be for a private hotel, but all of which would be for the broader city interests, or if the real goal is to do this to help state workers, then it should be a project with the state and put the money in that place and put it in a different location and fund it and get more parking spaces out of it. So I just don't see that there's a clear analysis going on. It seems as if people are seeing a possible project come forward that is frankly put forward, it's here now because of a private hotel wanting to do it, and everybody's saying, oh, I think that's going to be the solution without an analysis, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Thank you, Eve.
Hi, Deb Sacks, excuse me, it's dry in here. Net Zero Vermont, executive director of Net Zero Vermont, and we commissioned the design competition that gave the city a vision, and hundreds, almost a thousand people voted for that vision, and it didn't include, as I recall, a parking garage. If we want to get to net zero energy, a parking garage, an investment in such infrastructure would be leaning into more of car-centric and enabling car-centric lifestyles. And while I appreciate what retail needs and what your community needs, there are, what Eve just said I fully support, is a broader look at this. And I know that you're doing and working very hard, and I just applaud your commitment to how hard you are working on this project for a parking garage. But illuminate and step out for a moment and look at what the options could be and what you could have moving forward, forty, fifty years from now, as we try to get to net zero, which is net zero energy, the amount of energy that we use is the amount of energy we're producing, and, and having that renewable energy and electrifying our future transportation system could easily be met with a solution of a train. Imagine a community rail that's connecting the cities together in Vermont, and that's met with good public transit and micro-transit options. And that is where we might look at that broader analysis and see where this city could actually go and what it could be and how proud it could be of what it has. I have thirty seconds? So Net Zero would like to help on that and help get behind that kind of thinking and bring whatever resources that we can and experiences that other communities have. If the bond vote doesn't go forward, what is the backup plan? And how can we set the city going forward with maybe those auto-capture lots that are out of town? And thinking about what you're parking, and I know that you've studied this and studied this and studied this and over the years, and it's, it's really, it's really hard, but working together, we can get there.
Thank you. All right, any further comments from the public? Okay. Oh, okay, all right.
So my name is Laura Gephardt, I'm with the Montpelier Development Corporation. So many of the points that Dan raised from Montpelier Alive, I totally agree with, and all the comments that came out today. I do, I do just want to address that the project was proposed by, by a private interest, and that is the nature of a public-private partnership on projects like these. And the garage is meeting a whole lot of needs. A new hotel, which was identified in the Economic Development Strategic Plan as a transformational project, which is huge for the city. There is a private interest, but it means it's bringing more people to the downtown to shop at our small businesses, to see the great city, to interact with the folks who live here, and it also provides extra parking for residents, people coming in to work. So it has a lot of additional amenities, not just that private interest, but it wouldn't happen without that private interest who is also providing employment opportunities and is a very meaningful part of this community, so I do just want to recognize that. And in addressing some of the concerns about making it a car-centric, or, you know, promoting this car-centric mentality, this isn't excluding future visions of, you know, more sustainable transportation options. This is just meeting a need, we're not, we still have cars, and we will for a few more years at least, so this is accommodating some of those uses, and it does free up some surface lots for potential redevelopment for a higher and better use, so just wanted to make those comments, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so any further comments from the public? Okay, so other comments from councillors, I'm going to go Connor, and then we'll go from there.
So I'm not in love with building a parking garage, I don't think anybody is, you know, it's monstrous, it's, you know, it, it doesn't check a lot of boxes for me. That said, I do think the city did its due diligence in this case, and I believe we need this capacity to accomplish many of the things we want to do for the future of this city. One point I would address is, I'm a labour guy, a project of this magnitude is pretty rare for us in Montpelier, and I want us to be a socially responsible city and do it the right way. So I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to raise it, but I would bring up the idea of entering into a project labour agreement in this case, which is a pre-hire collective bargaining agreement that sets the terms and conditions of employment. That would determine the wage rates, the benefits of the employees actually working on the garage here. So I think there's more time to talk about in the future, but, you know, we should treat these employees like we, these contractors, like we treat our own employees in city government, so I will be bringing that up in the future.
Thank you. Yeah, before you...
That's totally fine.
Are you going to go?
I will, but you can... Ashley, do you want to go?
Um, so I echo what Connor said, that's, I mean, it seems like there is enough yay votes to approve this, which is what it is, but I certainly think that that's a significant piece. I know one of the issues that the Social and Economic Justice Committee was going to explore was creating a city minimum wage, and then with particular regard to contracts, potentially over a certain dollar amount, that we ensure that workers are treated fairly in those situations. I would also raise the question, because the city is investing in this, and again, I don't know what this would look like, I'm not purporting to say that I would, but the hotel will create jobs for the city, and one of the things that we as a city look at continually is what kind of jobs are these entities bringing to our community? And I think that warrants consideration if the city is going to be spending ten million dollars, or ten and a half million dollars of, of city money. Finally, I just, I am struck between some of the, the interesting contrasts between talking about parklets and using parking for public good versus creating a, a public good that creates a sort of direct private benefit. And I understand that this is probably going to go to the ballot, it seems as though there is enough support, and I appreciate that, but it just strikes me that as a, as a member of our community who lives relatively close to the downtown area, I want my downtown to be accessible, and frankly, I would rather have parklets than parking garages filling our city space, and that's not to say we don't need parking, because we do need parking, but it's just an interesting juxtaposition that I felt like I needed to highlight for everyone.
When we first had our presentation from the, from the consultants for the TIF proposal, one of the things, one of the paramount points they mentioned was that we should not be proceeding on the basis of if you build it, they will come, that we should only use TIF fundings for known projects with, with development partners, and because otherwise, we're heading down the road to financial disaster. And I think that this project clearly meets that standard, because we have a development partner in the hotel that is going hand-in-hand with this parking garage if the hotel doesn't go forward, the parking garage doesn't go forward, and vice versa. I think the hotel will increase a lot of downtown activity and business, and will provide jobs for people downtown, which are all things that we want. I think the Bishara family, over many decades, and I think back to what they did in nineteen ninety-two, has shown a real commitment to improving the city of Montpelier. Two or three meetings ago, we had a presentation from, on the Complete Streets project, and one of the things that's attractive to this is that if we have, if it turns... And I think that's, that's all a good thing. And finally, whether you agree with the complaints or not, one of the biggest complaints everybody has about Montpelier is that there's not enough parking. And the other thing we know from discussion of parking over many decades is that whenever there is a proposal for a parking garage, somehow it always seems to be the worst possible place for a parking garage. And I think that wherever a parking garage is proposed, it will get, get opposition. I think one of the things we talk about in density and avoiding sprawl is to build up and not out. Parking garage enables us to do that. Steve, I take your point about maybe the pit would be a good place for a parking garage rather than where it is now. If we build this parking garage here, maybe we don't need the pit to be just a big parking lot. Maybe that opens that up for other, other development, which I would, which I would like to see. So I'm supporting this at this point.
Yeah, go ahead, Rosie.
So I'm really sympathetic to a lot of the points that Councilor Hill made. And there are points that I initially held myself. When this came out initially as a private plan to do a development, you know, I kind of said, "Well, it's a, it's a private piece of land and the developer within our parameters, within our zoning parameters, they can, they can do what they want." But, you know, unless they're asking for the city's help, you know, we probably shouldn't get too involved in it. And then I felt really kind of, I felt bait and switch when the, the Bishara family came out after having announced this is a done deal and, and asked for the, the city's help and said that it couldn't move forward without the city's help. And I, you know, I was honest with them and with the rest of the council at that point. I, I was really mad. And I really pushed city staff to push really hard on this. If we are going to be involved, we need to get a good deal for the citizens of Montpelier. And we need to get everything we possibly can out of this deal. And so city staff have pushed. And I'm really pleased with some of the concessions we've been able to get and some of the benefits we've been able to get for the public. I still had a lot of concerns, you know? Is this, this kind of fell in our laps? Is this, have we done our due diligence here? And I've asked a lot of questions over the past, I can't even, it feels like at least a year that we've, we've been talking about this, perhaps more. Something like that. And I think that the project is better for those questions. But I'm also really sympathetic to the, the notion that those, a lot of those conversations have happened in executive session because we were negotiating. So I would like to give the public the opportunity to feel like they fully understand this and to ask more questions, because I know that I've asked questions that have made this project better and the rest of the councilors have as well. And even tonight, you know, I appreciated John Snell's comment about the, the flat garage being able to be repurposed at some point in the future. And, you know, questions like that or other questions that haven't come up yet could make this project even better. And so I asked Bill, you know, is there, this is the night we're kind of giving the, the presentation of the proposed deal to the public. But what are the points in which we can take more public input and ask, have the public ask more of those questions and bring more of those points to the discussion? So it sounds like, you know, we need to, if, if we want to go forward with a bond vote in November, there is a timeline. But we don't necessarily have to commit to anything tonight. We could give some more time for folks to digest this over the next few weeks and take some more public comment at the next meeting before voting on, on September 12th. So that is an option. And again, you know, the public does, we have to make a case for the public to support this in, in November. And if we don't make that case, then this doesn't go forward. But I do want people to feel like they understand this and that they've been able to contribute to it and ask those hard questions like we've had the opportunity to do. One further point I wanted to make is that as I was thinking about whether this was the right project for Montpelier, I started thinking about all the other things that would be nicest, that, you know, wouldn't it be cool if we could have more street festivals? If we could close Langdon Street and make a pedestrian street there, which I'm not proposing we do that tonight, but gosh, we can't even think about that right now because we need that parking. And there are so many possibilities that having that parking problem solved frees up for us, including, you know, the affordable housing at Christ Church possibility or some other projects that we've heard about where people said, "Oh, if I could get a few more spaces, I would do this." And we're not making this decision based on, on those things because they are not done deals. Those are, those could happen, as Jack said, but they're not, they're not done. But as I've been weighing this, those certainly have, you know, this is, this is a way to get there. The final comment I want to make is that I don't go near Burlington if I can help it. I hate Burlington. I think there's too much traffic. It's too much of a big city for me. I am a small-town person at this point. The only reason I ever go to Burlington is because I know that I can park in their parking garage on Church Street and then I don't have to deal with driving around and parking. And so I started thinking about that, about Montpelier. And there are people who don't come to Montpelier because parking is a pain. And if they had a garage where they could park, they would come to Montpelier. And so that's also played a role in my thinking about this project is, you know, without those parking garages on Church Street, I would never go to Church Street. And I'm wondering how many folks are out there who feel the same way about Montpelier. So those are a few of my comments. Turn it over to Ann.
Do you want to talk at all, or a little bit about opportunities the public does have to weigh in or further, further opportunities?
Well, so there's the, so let's talk first about the sort of legal steps that we have to follow. And then I think we can add more if that's important. I think it would be helpful if there's a signal to move forward to allow us to start putting some of these agreements, you know, to keep moving this ball forward as opposed to stalling for September 12th. But that said, and we're also planning to be talking about the wastewater plan on September 12th, which I suspect will be equally as long and complicated. But that is made. So the legal requirement is we have, you know, tonight's meeting, and then we have to hold a special meeting to warrant the, the ballot vote. And I think the, the thought would be that there would be nothing else on the agenda that night other than the one, two, three, or four ballot items being considered. So that would obviously be the last chance for people to weigh in to convince the council not to put it on the bond vote. You know, I know, I would be certainly willing to host a workshop meeting if people want to come in. And I think certainly questions like the design of the garage, whether it's flat or tall, you know, those aren't done deals. We've got to move that quickly, but they can certainly be looked at within certain timing and financial parameters. And, you know, I don't know if the council wants to create a small group or have a design workshop or something like that where people can come in and weigh in on. One of the reasons we wanted to get, and I, I do know that this only came out last night, but knowing that the council had over a month before it had to make a decision to give people time to digest this and ask questions and ask, you know, answer, ask, I'm happy to answer them at any time. And then, of course, if you choose to put on the bond vote, there will be another public information hearing. And of course, people can, their ultimate citizen participation is when they check the yes or no box. But we can, we can certainly add more if people want. But those are the, the things we have to do is the, the special meetings.
Thank you. So I want to thank all of those who offered comments tonight, you know, whether they were for it or against it. I think, you know, all of those comments add, you know, important richness to this discussion and sort of like, like Rosie was saying, I mean, I think that it really does make this project better when we have lots of different minds on it. So I also want to make a comment that I liked John's suggestion of the flat. You know, insofar as we can explore that, I'm, I'm also interested in that for potential future, you know, opportunities. So I'm, I'm also very excited about this. I, I've been, we've been talking about parking since I've got on the council and it will just be such a delight to be moving forward on, on a project. And, and I'm also excited to free up space potentially on street. So with all that in mind, you know, I'll just leave it at that because I don't want to be redundant. People have been very articulate. Other, other thoughts? And then I think we should do something or not.
I just wanted to add that I do not wish to start a feud with the Burlington City Council. They have a very nice city. I just, I prefer not to spend a lot of time.
Give them praise. When you go, you have a parking for us.
It's the poor man's Montpelier.
Donna?
Under recommended action, there seems to be like three parts here. So I was going to start with the motion to approve the agreement terms with Capital Plaza authorized city manager to complete and execute the final contract.
Is that your motion?
That's the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
So I would, I would really prefer to wait until September 12th to do that, just because Bill gave a great presentation and I want folks to have the opportunity to watch it. I want folks to have the opportunity to read about it in the paper and, you know, make those further comments. And then if we did want to make any changes to the contract with Capital Plaza or any further alterations that we haven't bound ourselves without hearing that further public comment.
So there are three parts to this. Is there any one part in particular or, or just all of it? I just want to be clear on what you're objecting to.
Well, if the motion doesn't get a second, it doesn't --
Oh, no, it did get a second.
It did.
I seconded it so we could --
Thank you.
Talk about it.
I didn't hear that.
Sorry, I'm just trying to pull it up and I got signed out.
I'm sure it's probably easier for you to like look at it, otherwise I'd just tell you.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Yes.
Whatever happens with this motion, can we set a date for the public hearing on a possible November bond vote, whether or not we vote yea or nay?
Yeah, we do have to set, and quite frankly, you know, if we proceed with the wastewater bond and if we proceed with some of the charter changes that have been talking, you're going to have to hold that hearing for that purpose as well. Because it's, this is 17th, it's a typo. It should be, it has to be the 27th to the 7th, somewhere in that window. And our normal meeting is on the 26th.
Yes. So I'm, I'm back to if we don't pass my motion, can we still set a date for the possible November bond vote tonight?
Oh, you can do that whether you set it or not.
Okay.
In fact, I hope you do.
So I did find that, so I guess I would be fine with, with setting the date so people can plan around it so that number three. And I think I would be okay with directing the city manager to complete. Some of those next steps are just, and I'm not the one who gets to, we all make this decision together, so.
You're letting people know how you're going to vote whether this motion passes.
Bill, can you describe real quick what those next steps are? Because I'm not finding them right in front of me.
Sure. Yeah, there's a whole list.
Second page, midway.
Yeah, so we, you know, obviously the VEPs approval we're going to do, I assume no matter what, the phase one, we've got to move on, the finalizing with our contractors. Again, we're not going to get too far down the road until we know we have money, but we need to do some of, you know, if we're going to look at design options, we're going to have to spend some of that, working out the parking systems, I think getting stuff ready for, to go to, for permit, finalizing the use of 60 State Street, those, that's not a big cost there. I think the main thing is, you know, we would, obviously we wouldn't secure any other parking tenants until the bond passed, but we certainly would start talking to people about that and that would be helpful. You know, I, I understand and I'm certainly all for the, having the public have as much participation. I also note it's three weeks before our next meeting, so it'll be sort of three weeks where we might be in a little bit of a hole. I'm sure the shares in the Capital Plaza would like to know that we're on board with their, the general terms of the deal. You know, we could set the final approval of it because you will, there will be a final contract. We could do that. But whatever, whatever people are comfortable moving forward with or not, I mean, it's your, it is your decision, not mine.
Can you describe a little bit more how doing final approval might work?
Well, I think that, so the way, the way this was, I had written it in that you would, you would approve the general terms and then we would just finalize the thing. We could always said, said it that you're approving these general terms, but the actual written contract comes back for council approval as opposed to authorizing me to just go ahead and finish it.
How do other folks feel about that? I mean, if I'm just by myself here, then we can.
I'd like to see my motion move forward as is. I'd like us to progress.
Yeah, go ahead, Glenn.
I feel as though it would be good to have some amount of delay, but it's, it's hard for me to say for sure one way or the other. I would vote for either emotion as, as, or a delay, honestly. I think either would be a positive move for me.
I don't know if you've noticed, but we've added a whiteboard off to the side here with our upcoming agenda items. So in case you're ever wondering, what, what are we going to be working on? We have things projected out. My, I'm also feeling a little torn about this because I, you know, appreciate public input and I want the, meaning the public to have the opportunity to weigh in and, you know, keep our, our thinking sort of open-handed. But September 12th is looking pretty full. So I'm a little, I'm, I'm just worried about that. So I'm going to, I'm leaning towards do it also, you know, moving it forward tonight and then, you know, knowing that like there, there will be still other opportunities for the public to comment and weigh in.
We have two more public hearings.
Can I just weigh one, one more thing in too? This is just a technical point, that, that any contract or anything that is done is 100% contingent on a bond passing. And that means it's contingent on whether you vote to put the bond onto a ballot. So we can't, you know, legally bind us to too far down the road without anything. So I just, you know, it's really the signal that we're, we're at least working in the same direction and we're moving forward. But, you know, even if we sign a contract and then the bond either doesn't pass or doesn't go on the ballot, then contract, or the TIF doesn't pass. I mean, that whole thing could go out the window next Thursday if they don't pass our TIF, right? So.
Glenn, do you need a minute? Are you okay?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'm just going to sort of say what I've already said. I just feel like the public has to have an opportunity, a meaningful opportunity to weigh in on this. And I just, I don't, I'd be happy to schedule a special meeting between, so we can divide up that agenda. But I, this is a huge ask of taxpayers and residents and everyone who participates in our community. And I just feel like people really need to, we need to get city buy-in on this, right? Because our city is the one responsible for this. And I, I just, I don't want to circumvent the public process in the name of getting this done for the sake of getting it done. And I, I just, I'm really uncomfortable with having city staff go forward and negotiate, you know, figure out contract terms and all of that when there are other things that need attention right now as well. And I just want to make sure that we give city staff clear guidance. I, I think that's something the council's been working on over the years, to be really clear about what we're asking. And for me, I want to have one more opportunity for the public to weigh in and then, and then have a vote on Donna's motion. I mean, everybody knows what my vote would be, but, you know, I, I just, I think it's important that the public have an opportunity to, to, to watch this meeting and then to, oops, and then to, to be able to reach out to all of us council members so that if they have questions and can't be here, they can get those questions asked and answered next time.
Connor?
I'd support a special meeting between now and the 12th. I think it's looking a little crowded on the 12th, so I might be hesitant to add it there.
Fine with me. Other thoughts? So if --
No, Dan, you don't know.
Yes, Jack?
Sorry.
then have a vote on Donna's motion. I mean, everybody knows what my vote would be, but, you know, I just, I think it's important that the public have an opportunity to, to, to watch this meeting and then to, oops, and then to, to be able to reach out to all of us council members so that if they have questions and can't be here, they can get those questions asked and answered next time.
Connor?
I'd support a special meeting between now and the 12th. I think it's looking a little crowded on the 12th, so I might be hesitant to add it there.
Fine with me. Other thoughts? So if.
No, Dan, you don't know.
Yes, Jack?
I'm not sure if a special meeting is what we need. I think I value the idea of public input though, and so at some point before we have a public hearing on the bond vote, I think it does make sense to, to tell Bill tonight, well, go forward, keep working on it, get everything developed, but come back to the council for contract approval. And I don't know if September 26th is too late for that or, because that's, I think, probably what I would suggest if we, if people want to go in that direction.
You'd suggest putting it on September 26th?
Yeah, what does it look like? Oh, yeah, that's short tonight. Now it's short. We know what happens.
Yeah. Uh, yes, Donna?
I know, Ashley, I just take a little bit back of such flat statements. I, I don't feel that I've neglected the public and I'm not, not open to more and we do have two official public hearings and we can have a workshop with the final material as the staff moves ahead between now, but we do have these clear deadlines and, and so I, my vote's not going to change. And indeed, we have time to make changes to suggestions such as what John did with, oh, let's think about this, maybe it should be flat. I don't think any of that really affects the big picture of what they're moving forward with and what we're going to then be discussing for the bond vote is all the final details and really soliciting public support at that time. And so I feel very comfortable voting on it tonight.
Sure, and I.
I would like to call the question.
Okay. So one possibility is, well, we can talk about what happens if it doesn't get voted up. I think we need a vote first.
I think I gotta vote first.
Well, yeah, Phil, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to offer that I'd be happy to host a workshop meeting on this next Wednesday, the 29th, in the evening, as a manager's staff workshop, open to the public, people can come and ask.
Right.
Counsel can come if they want, it won't be a one council meeting, nothing to vote, so people can have an opportunity to review it, but it would be good, as I say, you're not voting officially on anything until you vote to put it on the ballot. That's when you're actually putting your hand up to say you're going forward, so.
And Bill, is it a problem for you if we, if the council doesn't vote to approve until the 12th through the 26th?
It would be better if it was approved sooner. Yeah, I mean, I think just, it just, I mean, there's going to be uncertainty until the end, that's the nature of a public process and, but on one hand, we're trying to marshal forces to get moving on something and, and I think if they're sensing, you know, we don't know if this is really going to happen, you know, everyone's resources are going to go, you know, and, so.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe there's something in between that can be worded, a statement of support to move forward without a commitment or something like that, but I think, you know, everyone, people are, you know, companies that are, you know, architects and those stuff, you know, they're not really getting paid until the bond passes and they're doing work. You know, the Capitol Plaza's certainly putting a lot of their money up to develop the project. So there are people that are waiting on where the city's at with this, or at least, you know, understanding that there's a bond vote coming, or potentially coming. But I will commit to a, an open public session next Wednesday if anybody wants it.
And maybe not make that a special council meeting. Anyway, you've called the question, we should vote.
Long time ago.
Sorry. All right.
Works, just for the record.
How, how does it work, John?
The previous question, and it's essentially a motion that needs to be seconded and it has to be passed by a two-thirds, two-thirds majority. It was seconded?
Yes.
No.
No, not the call the question, the Donna's motion was seconded.
Right, right, no, I mean, calling the question, it's called previous question, two-thirds majority.
That's because she didn't realize she had to get a second.
Oh, thank you. Yep, good point.
People got talking and I didn't interrupt.
I apologize. All right, well, let's, I think we should vote, so.
I'm confused.
Okay.
What are we voting on right now? Donna's motion. Okay, and did you say two-thirds have to?
No.
No.
That's for calling the question.
Nobody seconded, so it failed.
Okay, nobody seconded, so we're just, okay.
Never got seconded, John.
Problematric.
Yeah, I'm a really great problematic.
So just to be clear, this is about approving the agreement, it was the first part, right, Donna?
Yes, the first sentence within our agenda.
Approve agreement terms with Capitol Plaza authorized city manager to complete and execute the final contract. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, so I think that's four. So the motion passes. Do you want to do the second part?
Sure. I'll make a motion to direct the city manager to complete the next steps required for this project as outlined in the attached memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, and the last part, do you want to?
Would be a motion to set the date between September 17th and October.
It's 27th, sorry.
27th, sorry.
My, that was.
September 27th and October 7th for a public hearing on a possible November 6th bond vote on this project.
Yeah, so that, this would be the meeting when you actually approve a warning.
Yes.
And put, you know, approve the ballot, the items that are on it. As I said, there's as many as four that you're talking about, so we need to hold that, we need to set the date for that, which would be good just for planning purposes to know what our, even if we decide not to do any of them and we can always cancel the meeting, but.
And that's with that October 2nd?
Yeah, I had suggested October 2nd, just had picked it, but it could be as early as, you know, I mean, you can move the September 26th meeting to September 27th, you could do anything you want. I just, that's a Tuesday night, I, VLCT Town Fair is on Wednesday, so I'm going to be out of town on Wednesday that night, so I can't, that's why I don't suggest a Tuesday, but you do without me.
So I apologize, Donna, I, I didn't know, hear if there was a second on that.
I don't know either.
Yeah, Glenn seconded it.
Oh, Glenn seconded, I'm sorry.
We haven't picked a date yet.
No, but it's vague, well, you said.
Well, I know, well, I mean, the hint was pick the date. It has to be sometime.
So.
That's why the set a date and then the between the two dates was in parentheses, like, pick one.
Had the staff sent the date and looked at everything.
Okay, this, actually, there has not been a second on this third one?
No, no, because we haven't decided what it is.
We don't know what the motion is yet.
Okay. Do you want to?
So.
Well, so do we want to talk about the second or some other time?
I like the second.
You like the second?
It's a Tuesday, just so everyone knows.
I won't be here, I'll be out of the country until.
That entire week?
I leave right after the council meeting on the 26th and I get back.
So even if we moved it to the 27th, it wouldn't do anything.
So I get back on the 10th, the day before the next council meeting.
So you're gone that entire?
I took it between council meetings. I'm flying to Sweden.
Yeah, I have a conflict on the second, but that's probably the only night that week that I have a conflict.
The fourth. I can't do the fourth, I teach on Thursday nights.
I mean, we can do the third, I can be here.
How about the third?
The third one?
Third, Wednesday.
Third.
Bill, did you say you couldn't be here at all?
Well, I'm supposed to not be here, but I, I'm supposed to be in South Burlington, I can come back. I mean, this is important.
And there's also the 27th of September.
Yeah, I can always do the next night, 27th.
Oh, the 27th?
Which doesn't.
It's a Thursday, but you're still probably teaching.
Yeah, I teach on Thursdays.
Still no good for you, sorry, right. So I move that we set up, schedule a public hearing for, or a special meeting or whatever, for October 3rd.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion about that?
You'll have a quorum, I won't be here. The third works for everybody else?
Good. Thank, anybody else not be able to be here, okay. All right, great, so no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
But, just because I'm looking at my calendar right now, 6:30, 7?
6:30.
Sure.
And Jamie will send out a calendar invite.
Okay.
And can I just?
Yes.
So I just wanted to clarify that my vote against approving the initial contract tonight is, or the terms of the agreement tonight is not opposition to the project. I would just have been more comfortable with more time for public comment before that, so I'm generally supportive of the project.
Thank you, Rosie. All right, and I, yeah, I think we should probably take a five-minute break. I'm so off of my timing.
Goodbye, Stephanie.
Stephanie reminded us that we actually have one other element that we need to get done in conjunction with the previous piece, so I'm going to turn it over to Bill to talk about this other.
So just a minor thing that Stephanie did remind me, that VEPSE had wanted to make sure there was a motion in the record that the council approved amending the VEPSE plan to reflect the larger garage. We talked about it last time, you did a head nod, but they, so I was going to ask that be added, so if you could just, again, it's only a plan.
And it, and this theoretically needs to happen before the VEPSE meeting.
Before next Thursday's meeting.
On Thursday, so.
I move that we amend the VEPSE plan to incorporate the larger parking garage design.
Second.
Further discussion? Favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on, so we are looking at a ordinance, really regarding the parking and such around the elementary school. Yeah, do you want to come on up? All right, my poster.
Everybody has this map in your packet, I know it's a little small, but really more for the public benefit, or if you want me to answer any questions specifically. So, good evening.
Evening, easy.
Alan McCardle, Director of Public Works, protected by Chief Ficus.
Key word here on tonight, buddy.
So city council approved a closure of Park Avenue at the request of the, the school for a temporary use as a supplemental playground while they're undergoing their project, was with the understanding that there would be some necessary parking impacts with that that would have to be addressed by ordinance, so returning tonight as expected to provide that, those parking ordinance revisions. Have a memo from me dated August 7th and I don't see anybody from the school tonight, but they, I'm not sure if they were going to be here tonight, but really this is the city business as to how we address our, our parking needs and how we accommodate parking needs and impacts as a result of the, of the closure. So with that, the, there were really five points that were part of that original plan. There was alternative on-street parking arrangements for staff and school visitors and these are, on the plans is A, B, C, D, and E on the original list, reserved on-street parking spaces for Park Avenue tenants, two-directional traffic flow on the section of Park Avenue that will remain open, remember that is a one-way street, parking restrictions at Loomis Liberty Intersection to accommodate these school buses that will be turning through a residential neighborhood, and reserving sufficient space on the southerly side of Hubbard Street to allow for the school buses to load on Hubbard instead of on Loomis. So really creating a new ordinance, if you will, and it's all temporary, so it's a new temporary, or it's a new subsection under Chapter 10, Article 7. 10, 725 is temporary prohibited and limited parking. It would give the, with your approval, and this is the first of two public hearings that we're required to do, but with your approval, you would authorize the city manager to, to put in, to effect these various parking ordinances, which shall expire and be of no further effect upon the reopening of Park Avenue, which shall approximately coincide with the completion of the new school project. There is one section in here that is considered permanent, something that we noticed, seems like every time we get in here, we find some housekeeping measure that we need to do. Nobody ever parks on the side of Hubbard Street between, so westerly side between Liberty and Park Avenue, so it should be non-controversial making that permanent and it's certainly important for circulation. There's also one amendment to this memorandum which came to my attention through one of the people who received our notices of this hearing. Glenn, I think was speaking to, forget his name, at the corner of Liberty and Loomis.
Dave Bellini.
Yes, thank you. So I did have a typo in there, appreciate that correction, so it did not affect their, their property and his concern specifically. So on Park Avenue, the, again, we have to technically make a, one section of that street two-way, so that's 10, 510, and that's note two on the plan, and interrupt me at any time if you'd like, I can go over to the board and answer questions if you'd like.
Can I interrupt you about your last statement about the, Dave Bellini, his parents live there.
Right.
And they're quite elderly and I believe his mother needs a wheelchair for mobility, so their property is not impacted, they'll be able to park on either side of Liberty?
That's correct.
Okay, so they'll be able to get in and out from that side entrance.
Right, so their home is here in this corner and the concern was being able to park around.
Right, both sides, yes.
The restrictions proposed is this corner and, and on this corner, so the bus will be making this, this movement.
So no impact on his side?
No impact on his side.
Okay.
I don't want to interrupt you if you have more things you want to share, Tom.
Go ahead.
Oh, did you have something to talk about, Tony?
I said one thing I just wanted to add, we had a meeting this afternoon, there was, there was definitely the potential that part of this may have to be modified because we need to see how this, this flows. So part of that would be if we have to increase a restricted area for no parking, it would be for temporary order of police, but we would notify you if we had to. One of the concerns is that wintertime operations, this is, for decades, this has been controversial in terms of the width of Liberty Street, so we need to monitor this very carefully because of, of the new regular impact of traffic flow of the buses and as well as how we're going to deal with a temporary street closure for the loading and unloading, which technically happens anyway, once those red lights go on, the buses. So that's my only piece there, that we're going to have to be fluid on this, monitor it closely and making sure that everything can, it's, it's, it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of growing pains with this project and I think a lot, a lot of tweaks here and there on the part of just people traveling through using any of those streets, like Liberty Street, for example, as an alternative to other, you know, gas cut-throughs and also, and as much clarity as the school can have for parents in terms of where are the safe drop-off areas that might not be as convenient and things like that to minimize impact.
We're going to get a test of this starting, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Starting next week, while this ordinance is still underway. We will have to implement this immediately, so in fact, signs are already in place, so I should have had them bagged because that's, some questions have already been raised, but the, the concern about the Liberty Street section between Loomis and Hubbard with cars parked on both sides of the street, a lot of that is parking from elsewhere years ago. We did a license plate study and found that many people are not, that park there are not residents of that particular neighborhood. So this is, this kind of overflow, overspill from the downtown area or, and school staff, and so that's essentially one way, will that be a problem, will that be something that we have to address immediately and have to return to seek a more formal approval of a parking restriction there. The parking of buses on Hubbard Street will, as Chief Ficus mentioned, they will activate their red lights. That will not necessarily be visible to somebody turning from Liberty onto Hubbard and then will encounter what could be up to 20 minutes of a stop bus essentially closing the street. That could be problematic and we know all of the locals, all of us locals here know how to cut around. to cut around downtown. If we'd like to avoid that in Liberty-Hubbard and College Street, certainly part of that bypass route, if you will. So we're toying with the idea of possibly alert, putting up a sign, variable message type of sign displaying that the street is essentially closed, so that we don't have knowing unwitting motorists entering Liberty and then having to try to turn around or do something like what the school transportation folks are concerned about is forcing the issue and possibly going around the red lights, creating a dangerous situation. So this is fluid, this is something that we need the latitude to address.
Go ahead, Donna.
I'm one of those that cut through there constantly, and my little Honda Civic, it's narrow. There's cars on both sides 90% of the time, daytime, evening time, it's just amazing. So I would definitely think you'd need to have some major signage as to what's changing in the traffic. It's a very busy street before snow happens.
If I can just add, just two general points and a little bit of history, you know, there, and Chief Gallows isn't here right now, but, you know, I'd be really, it's always been a concern, you know, for example, the largest truck that they have is Tower, is the Tower One, and can that in the wintertime, can it truly get through if you have people parked on both sides? There was a discussion many years ago about just having a prohibition of parking on one side of the street so we could safely accommodate. And also, just interestingly, you know, as far as how this conversation dovetails with the one you all just had, regardless of your side of it, but this is also now, we're dealing with the, you know, the impact of our own strategy, if you will, of parking. And my sister lives on Liberty Street, and, you know, and there's times when, you know, she could barely squeeze in and out of her driveway, and it's all the time. I mean, it's not just faculty members from the school or workers, it's a real challenge. And so we always, from a policing perspective, I'm always concerned about just the general quality of life in all of our neighborhoods here in Montpelier. So I just want to throw that out there, and as we think about how all of this, that, you know, that ebb and flow of one action here and one, you know, and so.
So at this point, unless you have more you want to add?
Well, I'm wondering if this council would like us to suggest an amendment to what we've proposed based on what Chief Ficus has stated about, you know, the concern about that. The next council hearing for this would be on the 12th, whether or not we should amend this now and get the word out to folks particularly on Liberty Street, which would impact if that's what we should do, or possibly, and this may be certainly a little unorthodox, but would the council consider granting or authorizing the city manager, police chief, to take action as necessary, as you deem necessary to maintain and achieve two-way traffic flow on these streets, based on what we find?
So I have too many things going on in my head right now, so the thing that I'm feeling pressed on right now is that I did not technically open the public hearing, so I'm going to officially do that, so opening the public hearing. And so along with that, so Chief Ficus, you had some suggestions about, like, if things need to be sort of amended on the fly?
Well, yeah, I mean, we can, you know, so we, at any time, if the public safety is impacted, if we can effectively get the buses or emergency vehicles through any street in Montpelier, we do this regularly with the snowbanks, Langley Street, I think, is the best-known example of that. We'll put in signs, temporary order of police, no parking, until we can, that situation can either be rectified, such as, you know, snow removal, or another, whatever is causing that, that impact. So the challenge that we have is this is an unusual traffic pattern, different types of traffic. So again, I'm simply, my area of concern, if we had an impact, if we had to change something, would be this side of the street between Loomis and Hubbard, so we can guarantee that the buses aren't going to be able to make this turn. Because even if we have, you know, as the ordinance states, the prohibition about parking here, it can still be really tight, depending on, somebody might be illegally parked space, but their vehicle might be larger than others, so that would be an area of, I can see potentially having to implement an emergency order of prohibition of parking.
So are you suggesting that we amend this ordinance to include prohibition of parking up there at this point, or do you want to wait and see how it goes?
Well, I can, well, you're going to have to react very quickly. Once a bus is impeded, it's kind of a domino effect until that vehicle is moved, so if it happened once, it happens once, it's happened too much, and there's a reason for police action. We can only foresee so much, so, or we could be proactive, enact an ordinance under this, under the temporary, consider permanent down the road sometime, and then only implement what we deem necessary, scale it back, if that makes sense.
Ashley, do you have something?
I do, and so I'm not familiar with bus routes in Montpelier. Have there always been buses that have taken this turn or these turns?
No.
No, this is the brand new traffic pattern.
This is only because of the playground project.
Used to go in front of the school.
Right, I just wasn't sure if they used to go that way for something else.
Just one other piece of how historically it did operate, there were those Jersey barriers that were painted, a proprietary protected corridor for, you know, dropping, you know, dropping off and picking up of the kids.
And they did not have to operate their lights, which worked great.
So, you know, we're not even, we still don't even know, and this doesn't even take, we're just, this part of the ordinance, the plan, we're talking about the school buses, there's going to be a lot of other factors, such as all the 10-wheel dump trucks, traffic that is going to be taking out, you know, the concerned soil, and what is that going to look like? How often are they going to be up and down School Street, onto Main Street, or, you know, so there's going to be a lot, that's why we, you know, I'm here to just talk about that we need, we might have to tweak various traffic patterns, and if so, we can certainly notify the council of our actions, and if we see a longer-term strategy. And we are working closely with the school, again, this is not a city project, but it's, but we're here to help facilitate the traffic management of it, and also the safety of those working in that environment, in our kids. So there's a lot of other things that are happening, and this is a big project, and we don't have a lot of traffic options, and that's what's been so challenging for us.
One of the advantages about amending the proposal tonight for first reading is that then we can get notice to the neighbors, so if they want to come out and comment at second reading. The other advantage is we will, I mean, we won't have winter conditions, I hope, between now and the next meeting, but we will have had a couple of weeks of school operation to see what might need to be changed.
So the amendment that you would be suggesting would be to amend the ordinance to provide that parking is only on one side of the street of Liberty Street on that block?
So the 40-foot length on the southerly side would extend to Hubbard under 10-7-1-6. Heading on that is Liberty and, Loomis and Liberty intersection, so we would revise that.
That makes sense to me, yeah.
Do we need to vote on that?
You just vote, it was a first reading, so you just vote to preliminary amendment, you know, you can still change it next meeting when you adopt the final version, but this way we can send, we have three weeks to get notice out to people and say, here's the final version. Because this did come up before, and there was some pushback against it.
Second your motion, Jack.
All right.
Okay. Before we vote on that, this is technically a public hearing, so if there's anyone from the public who would like to comment on that, you're certainly welcome, of course. Okay, so, and so is your motion, this, both this amendment and moving second?
Moving it to second reading.
To second reading for the next?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I'm clear. And you're good with that?
Yeah.
Are you good?
Well, I'm going to change.
Okay, it's both this amendment and voting to move, or to pass first reading. Okay, so, Connor?
And Mayor, I'll just have to recuse myself on this one. I work for Vermont NEA, represent classroom teachers, support professionals, they're the affected party, so.
Okay.
Send this one out.
All right, sounds good. All right, Alan, yes.
I guess I just want to make sure, do we know when we'll send notice, when we'll send notice out to impacted residents with this new proposal? Because I just, I received a few people, like a few inquiries, chiefly from Mr. Bellini, but he received it on Saturday for today's meeting, and he was really concerned about not being able to make it and if we hadn't been able to connect. So I just want to make sure that we get notice out to all potentially impacted residents so that they can reach out to all of us, and we can sort of field any questions that we might get and pass them on to Bill and Tom and Chief.
At the latest, it'll go out by next week. I will not be here on the 12th, so I want to get this done and move on, so, another reason to do it, but yours is more valid.
Good answer.
Appreciate your candor, friend.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you, awesome, thank you for your work on this. All right, so I'm going to ask a question of the public. Is anyone here for the parklet ordinance revision? Okay, oh, okay, so.
I just want to make sure you don't take away the no smoking, that's all.
Oh, okay, thank you. Just because I think there might be people here for other items, I'm going to shift that one later.
I don't think the no smoking is an issue.
I don't think the no smoking thing is an issue, Ginny.
No one's going to change that.
No, we all support it, I think.
Okay. Just so you know, so I'm going to move up the, I'm going to move the parklet to after the Ashbore conversation, so we're going to move now to the creation of Confluence Park, and then we'll talk about the Ashbore recommendations. So Ricardo and VRC crew, if you are, and Parks Commission, if you want to come on up, now's a good time. Jeff, you want to come up? So I feel like I should probably introduce this one a little bit, since I was the submitting party on this. So just a little background, we have the opportunity to create a park as part of a, like, an official city park, now that one Taylor Street is finally under construction, which is very exciting. And so even though Confluence Park is not done yet, my hope in this item is that we can ask city staff to create, well, to note it on the city website, that it's at least coming soon, and I know VRC has some thoughts about process of working together with city committees to make that, well, to get public input as to what it should look like. So I want to give you the opportunity, Ricardo and Steve, right? Yes, to come in and tell us what you're thinking for this space.
Thank you. So I'm Ricardo Erickson of the Vermont River Conservancy, and Steve Libby.
Steve Libby, Executive Director.
And I guess we prepared a statement for the council and didn't prepare anything to read, but I guess we were really excited for this opportunity to look at the design opportunities for this Confluence Park. We feel in our, in our research and looking into it, we found historical documents, some of which Ann included with the agenda today, that date back 23 years ago, people have been discussing this in the city, this need for a Confluence Park. And Vermont River Conservancy is very much focused on public access to our rivers, as well as protecting the land alongside our rivers. So for those reasons, we're drawn to this project, and also, interestingly, after talking about the parking garage, I also want to emphasize that this Confluence Park could be a tremendous opportunity for economic growth in our city. Imagine driving across the bridge by Shaws and Sarucci and seeing a beautiful park, seeing people in the water down there, imagine that, and a place to have your lunch, a place to go listen to music. So this park could bring a lot to the city in general. I don't know, Steve, if you have anything to add, or if there are any questions that we could answer and?
I also want to make sure if Jeff or Dan, you know, if you have any comments on this, I want to certainly give you an opportunity to talk about this as well.
Dan Dickerson from the Parks Commission. I will just say briefly that we discussed this park idea last night at our meeting, we're all very enthusiastic about it. We want to be partners with the Vermont River Conservancy in any way we can, and we took an official vote, and the motion passed 402 to support the creation of the park and to be partners in the creation and the ongoing maintenance of the park, and we're definitely, we're really psyched about it, so I think it'll be great, and that's all I'll say.
Great, thank you. Jeff, if you want to add something, you certainly can, you don't have to.
I'm not sure it's new, but it's exciting, the possibility of a downtown park that has a relationship with the river and gets people in a short walking distance to really feel the resource that we have and to take advantage of it, and probably the biggest way yet, so I'm excited about the prospect.
Great, so any questions? Ashley, and then Rosie, and then Donna.
So I'm curious, in terms of, like, city maintenance, I'm assuming that this would fall to you, and I read John's email also in response to Bill's piece about staffing, and I think it's become pretty clear that the city is over capacity already in terms of staff, you know, just staff capacity, and with the Emerald Ashbore coupled with this really exciting park, I feel like, yes, I can say yes to something tonight. I just, I want to make sure that as a city, we do our part in supporting this, which I think is going to translate into more staff resources to make sure that we are meeting current plus new demands.
Any comments on that?
I'll just say that, yes, we do have staffing issues, we do have resource issues.
There you go.
And we're going to do, as a Parks Commission, we're going to do our due diligence to present you with a budget that tries to sort of capture, you know, some of these existing responsibilities that may be fallen by the wayside or have been sort of, you know, not addressed as much as they should, as well as, you know, these new responsibilities. You know, I think taking care of Emerald Ashbore is vitally important. I think the establishment of this park in this key area of the city is vitally important, otherwise, you know, we might have more concerns about creating the park, but, you know, we can't pass this up. And so, you know, we're, we're going to work with the city council to give you a budget that, you know, hopefully doesn't explode, but also, you know, acknowledges these, the new responsibility, and hopefully the city council is ready to work with us on finding the middle ground and doing what we need to do.
Great, thank you. Rose?
So I'm a little bit confused about where exactly this is, and I should have asked for a map earlier. I'm wondering if we can pull something up so we can have a better sense. I see the attachments, but the attachments are, I think, covering some land covered by one Taylor, so I'm.
Right, and those pictures don't necessarily include the Taylor Street design, so I actually have here somewhere an image of the Taylor Street design.
I mean, and my understanding is we're just accepting the.
Stand behind Shaws and look across North Branch.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's.
The corner.
Part of you must just, like, text you this picture. It's just the very end of.
And we own this land already?
We do. Yep. It's just between, basically, the edge, I mean, the vision, at this point, anyway, is just between the edge of the parking lot all the way to the bank.
Okay.
Does that help?
And we're basically just agreeing tonight to have this help in designing this, right? Okay, great.
And to list it on the city website with, just like a coming soon, you know, we don't, it's not done, and that's okay.
With a, with a big request for a budget that actually meets all of the needs for this, because I don't want to build it and then not be able to do what needs to be done to keep it a place where people can be and have fun and do stuff, so.
Connor, you were next.
Um, no, Donna.
I'm next, but you have. Great. Well, I'm just a little confused on process, because I was around when Taylor Street started and the first design brought up this and removing the dam, but there's been no official motion by this council that I know of to establish this park. So I would think we would need to do that, that we at least want to move forward on it, and that's fine if we also want to put it on the website, but I was reading your, one. But I was reading your wonderful letter and it says you have a grant to contract for a design study, which you'll present to the city at the end of the year. You'll have a conceptual design with cost budgets and drawings with three different options. Now, that's including getting rid of the dam?
No.
Okay, because that's a big component. The dam, along with also, are flooding issue. Remember, part of the things they wanted to do, which Ann and I have seen on the council, Bill, you maybe helped me out here, but we were presented with a stormwater flooding option.
The ice jam.
Ice jams, that's it, thank you. And we really didn't like it very well because it didn't move forward with really using the river for things like this to happen. So I just feel like we need to have a really holistic look at it, and it's wonderful that you're going to do this piece, but I don't know how we can do this piece without dealing with the dam.
So in my vision of the future, if we're going to move forward with any kind of thinking about removing the dams, I think we need to specifically have some engineering studies done of that because those dams might be holding up the bank. And that's probably not necessarily even within the scope of what they're, you know, they can do at this point. So I'm into having that conversation, but we should probably have that, the question about the dam separately.
Well, other than the initial One Taylor Street proposal to do this park, that had to be done in order to make this park viable for kayakers, et cetera. So chicken and the egg, if you do, anyway.
Yeah.
Well, so I think there might be a difference, and I don't know. I'm speaking of out of ignorance here. But one of the parks we heard about was the actual active whitewater park.
Yep.
And I think...
That was one.
This is, I think, designing an area where people could access the river, but whitewater did require moving the dam and creating the whitewater. And I don't know if that's exactly what they're talking about here versus just a more different type of recreation.
Go ahead, Steve, again.
Yeah, so we're very aware of all the opportunities at the confluence for different recreational systems, including the whitewater park. We know that, as the mayor said, that removing the dam or altering the dam is a much larger scope of inquiry and a worthy one, but a much larger one than the small grant that we received to look at the confluence area itself. But we're very aware of that, and I think we would, in our discussions with the city committees and the public, talk about how this confluence park can be part of a larger picture, for sure. But it's just outside the scope of what we've been funded for in this initial phase. But we are very aware of that and think it's very exciting that there are these recreational opportunities right in downtown, on the water. I was just standing down there with Jeff and Ricardo a couple of days ago, and it's really amazing to stand down kind of below the railroad bridge and get the feel of what it's like to be down at the river level. It's really a whole different experience, so.
Ashley?
I guess the only other concern that I have is I want this park to happen, but we also have been kind of talking about what to do with the dam and all of those issues. And so I'm a bit of a layperson in this arena, but if we were to remove the dam, we talked about how that would change significantly the sort of lay of the land in the banks, which could and probably would in some way impact this park, right?
Yeah, I think if the dam that you're talking about is on the main stem of the Winuski upstream from the Main Street Bridge. So that's quite a distance from this Confluence Park area.
No, it's the one by Shaw's. It's the one that's right there.
So the small dam across the North Branch.
No, no.
No. Across Winuski.
No, but so the one...
If you're in the Shaw's parking lot, you're looking right at it.
Shaw's parking lot, dam.
Okay, so the...
You're talking about the same one.
That dam is not abutting this property that we're looking at for the Confluence Park. So I don't know that there would be a structural issue.
It would probably, it's far enough away that it's, it would probably be fine.
Let me give another crack at answering that. So my understanding of the whitewater concept means removing the dam and then channelizing the river so that the water would move through that area in a more natural thing, and then boulders would be placed.
Yes, yes.
And so you'd create a flow that would prevent ice dams, but you'd still have the shelves that would have the same capacity of the river, but you'd just change the nature of the river that would make it much more river, natural river, and more kayak and boating friendly. So that channelization would go up the stream, so that dam is not a tall dam. So we're...and you can't put, whether it's an amphitheater or not, is possible. You can't really lower that too low anyway. So I think the engineering difference is not going to be significant. And I'm thinking with the little consult that they can figure the couple of different heights on what that would mean with or without the dam.
Okay. Any further things then?
No, because in your letter, you do talk about being flood resistant. So you obviously are looking at different high water marks.
Right. And additionally, I just wanted to add that with our point of having three options, you know, three options is, obviously, the opportunities, you know, if we had presented a blank canvas to designers, the opportunities could be endless, but we want to have some different options within different budget ranges and within different ecological impacts levels as well. So hence, we understand that there could be a number of different opportunities depending on how deep we want to get into the options for recreation. So that's why we'd like to have the study focus on the actual physical land there, that small parcel, very small parcel, but then also to focus on in the river. How can people get to the river? And those, I think, are going to present, we will be presented with multiple opportunities that we'll have to weigh feasibility, financially, ecologically.
Glenn?
I just want to briefly say that I am not concerned about potential downstream effects of supporting this study at the moment. I think it's going to be great. And I also want to recommend that everyone take a look down in that direction whenever you have the opportunity. I walk over the Main Street Bridge several times every day, and I have seen otters and mink and beavers, both upstream and downstream of that spot, along with tons of water fowl all the time. So it's already surprisingly rich, and I think it's going to be really exciting to see the changes.
Great. I think we should vote. Oh, yeah, do you have, oh, comments? Yes, of course.
We did talk extensively about this during the Taylor Street Committee days, and one of the problems that I am now seeing is that the Taylor Street building was designed by somebody and the shared pathway, if I may, was designed by somebody else. And that shared pathway design was never really locked in because of the many uncertainties that there were. That we're moving closer to where that's exactly going to be and what it might look like, but to my knowledge, it's still not permanently designed.
I think it is.
Yeah, it is. It's got an overview and...
Well, let's say from the North Branch, from the North Branch East, right, towards...that's a bit wishy-washy, as far as I know, from the North Branch going toward Main Street.
Over the bridge?
Yeah.
No, I think that's all set. New bridge, and then it's coming straight out to Main Street.
Right, I've seen the drawings. What I'm concerned about is that there's all of a sudden a lot of parking in there. And I've communicated with Bill about this. That doesn't fit very nicely with the Confluence Park, as far as I'm concerned. There's two-way streets in there where I'd love to see options for one-way streets. We, in fact, had a, I think, a fairly sophisticated design by the engineers for access to the river.
The Confluence Park's in the other side, right?
That would go under the new pedestrian bridge and under the existing railroad bridge and would be fully handicap accessible, big enough that you could get a canoe carried down and put in the water into the North Branch right at the confluence.
That survived.
Yeah.
That design, I thought...
That's not in the design right now.
Wow.
And so those things were discussed and kind of lost in the mix.
Well, there were Army Corps issues too and water access issues, and, I mean, it wasn't just a, let's put this in.
I want to, certainly want you to be able to finish your thought there.
Yeah, and then the kayakers too, you know, that I'd love to meld that back into the discussion.
Yeah. Well, I certainly hope that by the end of this, we have some options for access to the river, and whether it's on the Shaw's side or on the Confluence Park side of the river, that we, you know, figure something out. So, and your point's well taken, you know, that the other side of the river is a lot of parking and let's, you know, it is what it is for now, and, you know, let's keep talking about it. So, thank you.
Parking for the park.
Yeah. All right. I hope it's clear what my, so in light of Donna's suggestion here...
I'm still confused about what we need as a motion.
I would move that we move ahead with the design and plans, right?
The River Conservatory?
They're doing the study on our behalf. Do we need to commit to anything? They're going to, you're going to provide us with some options and we'll decide if we like them, right?
Well, we have to direct the city staff to include Confluence Park...
Website.
On the website. And then...
Donna suggested that we actually just create Confluence Park or something.
We've never made an official motion to support Confluence Park existing. So it seemed to me we'd need to make a motion that we want to have that as our vision and that we'll direct staff to have a placeholder on our website?
Yeah. Okay. So I would move then that we designate the portion on the map on page, I think it's page 18 of the Capitol District Master Plan. I would move that we designate that space, I believe it's marked as number, is it number five?
Four.
Four. I would move then that we designate that area marked as number four on page 18 of the Capitol District Master Plan as Confluence Park. I would further direct city staff to add that to our website as a coming attraction.
We have a...
Well done. I'll second it.
Everybody can get behind.
Do you have that, do you have that image?
I'm looking at it.
Can you just, like, just turn your laptop around just so we can see, like...
To you or to Rose?
I want to see.
Because I'm not sure.
I see what she's talking about, although this is...
Oh, you're talking about from the...
Right.
Okay.
This is called the Capitol District Master Plan.
Capitol District Master Plan from 2000.
Does that work? Will you do that designation? Okay.
Guys are stealing the...
Okay, so there was a second?
Make your work.
Yes.
It'll be what they decide.
John, do it.
Great. Any further discussion? Great. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. So excited about this. All right, let's move on to talking about recommendations regarding the Emerald Ash Borer. So how shall we start this?
I guess I'll start before the Ash Borer's all come out. At the last meeting, we received a presentation from the Tree Board and folks about the Ash Borer and its status in the city and requesting short and long-term funding. And it was left for the city manager to make a recommendation to the council for this meeting. So I did speak a bit with Jeff and tried to get an understanding of the current status of Ash Borer versus, you know, what work is needed for that specifically versus what work is sort of backlog work that just, you know, we're behind on and would need to get done in order to deal with the Ash Borer, that kind of thing. And so my recommendation was that, you know, I was reluctant and am reluctant to support a new position. We rarely, if ever, add new positions sort of out of budget because we don't, you know, we just talked about adding positions for this. We know that there's, the police want new people. We, you know, I think any department could come in at any time and make the case why they need a new person at this particular point in time. And so my view is that this is a very serious problem. We need to take it seriously. We've been put unnoticed for this, so I don't mean to diminish it, but we need to weigh the priority for this, along with all the other city priorities when we're setting our budget. So for this year that we're in, we did set a service level for trees and parks, and I'd be the first to say it's probably understaffed, but they're getting the work done that we set out to do with the resources that we allocated. But we also had the foresight over the last two years to set 4,000 a year aside for the Ash Borer, knowing it was coming, and which is nowhere near adequate. I get that. But there was a request to treat some trees, a request to cut some trees, and it seems to me that that could be done with that amount of funding, certainly with what was presented. But it's hard to say we're going to hire a new staff person that we might then be cutting in a couple of months when we do the budget. And so that is my position. It's not to say that, it's not necessary, it's not to say that it's not an important problem, but I think we laid out our resources last year, the voters passed them, and so that's where I'm at. Obviously, I'm very clear that the Tree Board and the Tree Warden don't agree with me, and that's why we're here having this conversation.
Rosie, and then I'm going to have some comments.
Sure. It occurs to me that tree removal is a pretty specialized skill, and I'm wondering if we can, at least in the interim, contract out for, to deal with some of the backlog of tree removal to a private contractor, and that potentially that would get us into a better position for the spring to bring on a full-time staff member or, you know, whatever we decide to do in the budget process. But that might be a temporary solution that would move us forward using some of that $8,000. I know that won't go a long way towards contracting out, but certainly we have companies that do this work, and I would assume we already do that sometimes.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I mean, they do contract, and I know it's pretty expensive per tree. I don't know how many trees you'd get done, depending on the type of work. I mean, I wouldn't attempt to dictate how the 8,000 was used. I would assume they would use it as much as they can. But, I mean, I've said, I didn't say I don't want to...
So I'm also hesitant to add a staff person midstream here. It's certainly something that I would be up for talking about, you know, in the context of our budget conversation, but again, in the context of all the other positions that we might be adding. Having said that, you know, if there's a way, like, I appreciate Rosie's comments about, you know, what can be done now, I mean, if this is something that we can contract out. So one of the things that I'm not totally clear on is if we were going to try to work on some of the backlog, just like how much that specifically would cost so that we can be better positioned to deal with it in the spring. And then in the meanwhile, like, you know, what needs to be done between now and the spring in terms of, you know, communicating with National Life or talking with...
Mating communities.
Mating communities, or like spraying trees, like what actually needs to be done, like logistically, like right now? And if we can take care of some of that backlog, like, how much is that, you know, that we're talking about to contract that out? Yeah, Donna and Connor?
And you may want to go to them first, but I guess I would like to frame the problem, having lived here with the big flood in 1992, when we didn't have a clue how to really deal with it, and we came out of that and started having plans, strategies. And so I see this bore, this little bore, as the leak in the dike, and we got to do more than just put our thumb in it. And maybe it's not a staff person, but it's got to be some personnel that can really lead the way, because trees need to be constantly inventoried, and they have to be taken away and dealt with. And they've got some ideas, they call it in their, the packet they gave us, they call it, I think, a marshalling area. Jeff can correct me. But even just doing the marshalling area is a major capital expense, and you got to go from the first tree you cut down that's infected, you got to deal with it right away. And they have a way to peel it out, so then you take away the bore, and then you have some wood that you can use and then sell and make some revenue. But as soon as we have that first tree, we're behind the game. So I don't wanna wait till we're flooding and have, you know, our boats are in the street. I wanna do it now. And, and I know you supported, that's why we got the 8,000 we got. We had to push really hard with the other council to just get 4,000 each year. And it is a very small thumb in the dike. And I know it's out of sequence, but even if you're not dealing with the backlog, just reading this plan as far as monitoring trees, and there's a state grant that's gonna be out, and they say they're going to award it to that community that is the most innovative of how they're going to deal with the ash borer. Cause from my reading, the states and feds haven't decided how to do it. And so we could spend part of our personnel time that we'd be buying, not only inventorying the trees, but really working on a really clever, innovative way to make, as Jeff would say, lemonade out of this sour sour lemon situation. And then get the, the support of the state grant, maximize our dollars, and save our trees. Public outreach is huge. We have a lot of trees on private property. National Life is huge. They haven't come to the table yet.
So Donna, this, this is a, a grant through the state, is that right?
Well, the state is, they'll tell you about, the state, I believe, is setting up a grant.
And we don't know what the deadline is for that?
No, we don't.
Okay, all right.
No, but it's coming up because they're behind the eight ball too.
Right, sure, yeah.
So I, I don't want us to take the backseat, I'm sorry. I want us to just really push out and look to where we could find some money for staff. Because I also know when you hire a contractor for a tree, I mean, Jeff will have the numbers. You're talking five, six times what we pay our staff. So I just really want us to take this serious. I don't wanna have a flood of dying trees.
Okay, thank you. Connor, did you?
Yeah, no, just a rookie question. Say we go through the budget process, we approve a position, what's realistically, what's the earliest possible this position is on the ground?
We could move it, you know. Once town meeting approves the vote, I mean, technically the budget doesn't take place till July 1, but we can usually move stuff quicker. You know, we can start moving after that, after town meeting time.
Okay, thanks.
Ashley?
So I would echo a lot of what Donna said. I think these are the very things that city government is supposed to be focusing on. And, and I, I totally appreciate that we need lots of city staff, which is, you know, sort of one of the reasons that I was a bit reticent, quite reticent, about expending more city staff resources on, on putting together these parking garage contracts. Because I, I know that all of our city departments are already sort of tapped out as it is. I just, I'm wondering, I mean, to me, this is the kind of thing where I think we have the capacity to be innovative in these solutions. And, and I think it would make sense to, to bring someone in. I know, $8,000 I don't think is nearly enough to do this, but to bring somebody in to, or maybe to have the, the tree board identify, like, what are the most critical things that we can get done? What do we need to get that done? And, and I would support and ask to, to come out of some other fund to, to do that work, because I think that we have a committed group of folks here who, I get lots of emails and volunteer opportunities, and I'm gonna make it to one. I'm just terrified of ticks because I have Lyme disease. So I, I, I think this is the kind of thing that city government should be supporting and should really be finding ways to, to make this work. And I, and I, I don't see a way around adding a position if we're already hearing from, you know, from parks that we can't even keep up with what we need to be keeping up with, and now we're adding more to that with a new park and, and all these other new things that are really exciting and happening here. I, I think I would push pretty hard to, to find the funds. If we can identify sort of the most critical, if we, if, if we can't get a staff person right now, if you could give us like your top five things and come back to us as soon as, as soon as you possibly can, which I feel bad even asking, cause you do all of the things. If you could get us that list, I would be more than willing to, to sort of make that push to get those funds, because I, I think this is the very thing that we are here to do.
Can I add something to this conversation?
Sure. Yeah, come up and introduce yourself.
And I don't think I need a microphone.
Well, you do for the people at home. You're being recorded.
Yes, you do. Please.
All right.
And what's your name?
It's my understanding.
And would you tell us your name first?
Oh, I'm just sorry. My name is Wanda Baril, and I think some of you know about me already.
Thank you.
Because I got an award a while ago. And I, it's my understanding that there is, that there is another group of individuals working on this problem. And I've given them some information tonight to contact this group, which is called the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. And they meet, I think, every other week, not week, but every other month. And they would like to invite us to maybe go to one of their meetings and to talk with them about our issues and see what they're trying to do. Because they are meeting and talking about this very same thing. So I'm not in any position to lead the troops, but I think I could set up a meeting for somebody, maybe you two, to go and talk with them and find out, okay, what are they doing? If it's money they need, then are they getting money? Where is it coming from? You know, there's a lot of questions there, I think, that haven't been answered yet. And we might be able to kind of come back with a report saying, well, this group is doing this, and maybe that would solve some of the problem. I'm not sure.
Sure. So maybe we can have you coordinate with, with the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission and.
And their office is upstairs over Rite Aid, so you can walk to it up here.
And we have a rep on, on that board, so we could certainly facilitate.
We have a member on that board.
Okay. So I would get him to, or her, to connect with you.
Yeah.
And see if we can't move forward with that.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
And by the way, I'm living in Montpelier now.
Well, you're not in Portland anymore.
Say something.
Glenn, and then, and then I would love to invite tree board, John, Jeff, to come back up and chat. Other John.
Rosie first, I think.
Oh, whatever.
So I was, I confess, when I was thinking about budgeting process, I was thinking November. I was forgetting the fact that then we go, you know, the whole timeline. So I, you know, I would like to have more of a holistic conversation about how this fits into our budget in November. But I wanna be ready to move forward at that point before hanging around, waiting around for the new budget year. So I don't know how best to work that. Just timeline.
Are you thinking of, like, trying to separate out some things for now and other things for that conversation, or just leaving it, leaving it all till the, the conversation November?
I mean, I, I really like us being able to sit down and figure out, okay, staff positions, what are our priorities, and, and have that whole conversation together. But I am realizing that that means putting this off much further than I was thinking. And this is urgent. And if we're really, you know, if we're not able to get a new person on till late in the spring, even if we jump the gun a little bit, that worries me. So I, I don't know. I don't know.
Fair enough. Glenn?
I don't wanna be reckless with this, but I, I think I'm in favor of adding staff now. As far as I can tell, everything, including, for example, making a list of the priorities and so on, depends on more staff hours, and there are not staff hours now. The, the letter that we got from John Snell earlier this week, and also the recent letter, I think, from Dan Dickerson, use words like exponential. And to me, that means the same kind of thing as a stitch in time saves nine. If we do it now, then we will have less to do later. And I think that that is an accurate description of this problem, as I see it. So Donna's finger in the dike analogy is, is the same to me. If you don't, you know, that dike will continue cracking. You're gonna need a lot more fingers. So I would, I would be in favor of more staff now.
John, you wanna come share any thoughts? Or, or Jeff? Whoever?
Jeff, sit at the table.
Thank you. And, and I'm glad I'm out here instead of sitting in chairs, I gotta tell ya. You know, it's hard enough dealing with the darn ash borer, but to deal with the issues you are is even probably more problematic. So I just drove back from Michigan, and I got to see what this thing looks like. And it's horrendous. And if we don't hop on it and deal with it right now, according to the plan that John drew up, that's a brilliant plan, by the way, and, and a lot of the other towns in central Vermont and elsewhere are, are stealing our plan and using it, it's that good. Then we're gonna see results like I saw on the way home, which is literally, I passed tens of thousands of trees along the roadside that were dead. Many of them were so dead, they were coming down, including into the interstate highway in some cases. I saw other places where it had just started. I did a lot of investigation, and it's very clear that that's what's ahead of us. And I hadn't seen it with quite such shocking results as, as I saw in the last couple of weeks. I appreciate being able to send that note to you. It was a little awkward to do that, and thank you for just accepting it. Clearly, one of the big issues is that the parks people are essential to making this happen. And I wouldn't say that Jeff's been lying to you over the past couple of years, but we all know Jeff is enthusiastic. Where is he?
Right back there.
He's an enthusiastic guy who always emphasizes the positivity in things. And honestly, I think that, you know, when I look at what's available to us as a tree board from Parks Resources, I'm counting one person and maybe another quarter person. It's not two people anymore. And it's some volunteers that, you know, we can roust up, but it's not what we need to deal with this problem. The 8,000 bucks is a wonderful offer. I would point out that when we came to you in 2013, we suggested setting aside $20,000 a year, in which case we'd be looking at a hundred grand, and that would be a whole different kettle of fish. But I think that, given the limitations of parks right now, and I, I'm not privy to all of it, so if I'm wrong, forgive me, but that, it's just not, we don't have the availability of what we need. And what we need is somebody that come early March, late February, is able to just go right in and do the work that needs to be done. We're not treating trees now. We're gonna have to wait until spring to do that, so we can't spend the $8,000 on treatment of downtown trees now. To hire an outside arborist to come in and cut, I think, you know, sometimes you have to do it. There's a couple trees now that I think are beyond the capabilities of parks, as good as they are. And, and that's where you do hire somebody that has bigger equipment and more experience. But the $8,000 would go like that to bring it in. It's just not sufficient to what we need. To do work now is what we're aiming for, is to get caught up on some of the dangerous tree work, the hazard tree work, so that come spring, parks people are available to work on the ash borer. And I'm gonna let John talk about some of what those needs will be in the spring. But they're, you know, they're, they're gonna require somebody who knows what they're doing. And I see that person coming on now or very soon and being fully trained and capable by spring to be able to just go for it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt. Do you have a sense, or Jeff, do you have a sense of how much it would cost to contract out the, the backlog?
I would guess about twice as much as if we did it ourselves. So there's a couple types of backlogs. And one is hazardous trees. And we're close to catching up to the hazardous trees identified in the inventory about four years ago. But the other thing that we're behind on, and, and it could be neglected further, it's been neglected for a lot of years, but the, the longer you neglect pruning trees and doing the prophylactic care, the more expense you have in the backend. You have bad forks that get older and, and split, and then at a certain point, they can't be, they can't be pruned, pruned out of it. And we've been wanting to get to a neighborhood by neighborhood pruning program to, to prevent a, a number of those kinds of problems. And we haven't been doing that because we've been working on hazard trees. So, and, and the other thing to put into the mix is if we wait too long, so that we're in a, in a busy time, then we have to hire someone with skills. We can't start them and, and train someone at a, at a lower age, which is what we'd like to do, is start someone part-time, get them trained, and then be ready for, to jump into action next year when things heat up.
But you, you don't have a number for?
For.
If we contracted it out just right now?
I don't think I could give you.
Okay.
Responsible number now.
Sure.
But I could get that to you.
Okay.
In the next meeting.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, probably, probably $20,000 would be my rough guess.
Ballpark.
But I'll give you, I'll give you something more accurate.
Great, thank you.
Before Jeff disappears?
Yeah, Donna?
Would you explain, cause when I was at the Parks Commission last evening and heard you talk about what percentage of the park staff applies to trees, it's like, the staff is split between the tree board and the Parks Commission. Is that one-fifth?
Right now, it's, no, well, it's, Al and I each doing one day a week, so it's two-fifths.
For trees, Jeff.
Two-fifths.
For trees.
For the year, we have two-fifths of a position to take care of. Two and a half thousand, three thousand, well, if you include the, the bike path and the public land, it's probably 3,000 street trees, yeah.
Thank you. And I know, John, we had interrupted you, so if you wanna jump back in.
We'll share it.
Yep.
The, the thing that's really crucial in this is the, the idea of exponential. And that, that it's not just a linear thing that's gonna get worse and worse and worse. It's gonna explode in the spring. The small infestation that we saw of probably less than a dozen trees up at National Life, and by the way, those have now been ground up and burned in their, in their boiler. That's gonna explode. That dozen trees could easily end up being 100 or more trees next year. It could jump from there to four or five other locations. You don't know how bad it's gonna be.
Here's my.
We know that it's gonna be exponential.
So what's gonna happen? And I, I hear that, and I heard that before, and I get it, and I factored that into my thinking. But what's gonna happen between now and then that's gonna prevent that? If, what's, what's our new person gonna do between now and then to stop that from happening between now and spring?
Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna take steps to understand where the spread happens. So, so we'll, we'll be setting out traps that will allow us to identify if there's, in various areas around the city, if there are insects. Are they there? We'll be able to do more branch sampling, which requires a bucket trap going up in the tree and actually sampling branches of suspect trees. There'd be a number of steps. But the idea is that if we know where it is, then we can get these trees when they're first infected, uh, excuse me, infested. And if we don't, then, then it becomes a much more costly issue because the tree becomes brittle and is more costly to take down.
Ken?
I have a question.
So, yeah, Jack, and then Rosie, and then back to Donna.
It seems to me that the only real concrete proposal we have before us tonight is the manager's proposal to authorize the expenditure of this $8,000. And I would like to invite you, working with Jeff or whoever, to come back with a real fleshed-out proposal for how many staff, what staff, and what they would do before we're into the, before it just goes on the city budget in, on town meeting day. A question I have is, with regard to the manager's proposal now, if we do what he recommends and authorize the use of this $8,000. if we do what he recommends and authorize the use of this $8,000, could that be used usefully before some more comprehensive plan is adopted?
From my point of view, and I'll let these two other guys talk to that as well, the thing that's needed right now is to hire somebody that's not going to be a full-fledged licensed arborist, that we can train up on safety, chainsaw, all the EAB stuff, and have them ready to go in the spring. In the meantime, there's a lot of inventory work that can be done. Just for Yahoo's added up, my hours, I'm pretty rigorous about keeping track of that. And since the first of the year, I put 250 hours into this tree board. And I'm going to be 70 years old every month and I can't keep it up. And it's exponential. I can't do 2,000 hours next year. I can't.
Can you inventory in the winter?
Yes, absolutely.
So you can still be assessing where it's at?
We've inventoried, you know, all that we have. Chances are good that it's not going to spread a lot over the winter. That we'll see, but there are things that we can do over the winter.
So would it make sense to use this $8,000 not for treatment and/or removal of ash trees, but to begin with inventory and potential staff training?
To get somebody onboard and get them trained up.
I see.
I think that's what makes the most sense. But I'll let these guys talk.
A little bit more of a picture for what I have, but I could get you even more detail. So what I have in mind is that they would do the inventory. And a matter of fact, in October is the best time to do branch sampling. Right now, we've tried to do it, but the larvae is in the tree and it's trees are working around. And the research from other states that have done this have shown that late September, early October, you go to the distressed trees and you take branches and you look for the galleries underneath. And that gives you an idea where it is. So then you can act on that over the winter or you know where to marshal your resources in the next spring. So that would be a key thing. And the other thing I would want to do with that person is get them in a neighborhood program, starting to prune some trees and get that experience in a bucket truck on the ground and get going with that. So it would be a two-pronged.
So I hate to be a little dollars and cents-ish about this, but there's part of me that's dubious that hiring somebody now and paying them through till, you know, March of next year would end up being cheaper than just paying someone who was a professional arborist in March.
Well, we wouldn't have the capacity to do the branch sampling in October and have a picture and a plan by then. That would limit that. And we wouldn't be able to do the neighborhood pruning program until March either. So we could jump into action with a professional in spring, but we wouldn't have taken care of any of the backlog. So we would need to pay the higher-paid person. That's the dilemma.
Right, Rosie?
So I'm just trying to think of all our potential options here. And so I was interested to hear that you and Alec are each spending one day a week on trees. And I'm wondering if we could use some of our money instead to contract out some of your other responsibilities to free up more of your time, you know, as you're already trained and presumably able to do all this, that maybe that would be a way of, in the interim, dedicating more time to it and then we can have the conversation about whether we need an additional position, which we likely will, but then we can find the money in a more comprehensive.
Yeah, or if I can jump back in, maybe even finding things that are occupying Jeff's time now or Alex's time that could be done either by DPW or recreation. I don't know.
Sure. It's all a good part of the conversation.
John Akulosik, I had an idea. I'm not sure it will fly here. I worked for the state for over 30 years. And as new administrations came in, they often gave us new jobs to do. And when you're faced with new tasks, you have an option. One is to stop doing something that you're doing. That never happens. Option two was basically to take personnel from another area and at least assign them temporarily to help you accomplish the goal. So it's called, you know, "other duties as assigned" is how they put it. And that gets you over the hump of the work. And again, I don't know if that would fly here, but instead of putting out the money to hire another person, which is what they really need, if you could transfer, possibly transfer a willing and able person from DPW into Jeff's group to work on this problem, probably for quite a few years here. That's just a thought.
That seems interesting to me. Of course, we need to have lots of conversation about that.
Yeah, or pick up some other slack.
Okay.
I wanted to get back to your thought of paying somebody over the winter.
Yeah.
I don't know what the cost difference is going to be, but I'm envisioning that the kind of person we have in mind hiring now or soon and training up so that they're fully ready in the spring, compared to, you know, a fully qualified arborist, you're talking about two or three to one price difference. So we can invest in somebody and really have that payoff for a long time to hire an arborist in the spring, if one's available, because these guys are all flat-out busy already dealing with this insect. I just don't see it as a viable option.
So at this point, team, what is your pleasure? What do you want to do?
Well, I'd like to hear Bill's reaction to some of the ideas about shifting other personnel or shifting responsibilities of tree staff in the short term.
I think those are all fine ideas and we'd have to talk about them. I mean, I think what we'll find is the situation that is being described in this department isn't that different across the board. DPW is, you know, way overbooked right now and they're running at max. So, you know, who are they going to give up? But, you know, we can certainly have that conversation and talk about it and see whether, you know, it might even be that we could find someone for a short period of time until we do budget. You know, again, I want to reiterate, I'm not saying sympathetic, I'm not unsympathetic to the situation that they need more staff. But there will be, you know, we're going to have some number when we do our budget, some limit. Maybe a different limit than it's been the last few years, but there's going to be a limit. And we're going to want to include this position and these kind of things. We're going to want to include, I suspect, a lot more money for the Housing Trust Fund. We're going to want to include positions for MEAC and energy and facilities. We're going to want to include an additional police person. We have a long list of people. You know, some of those will make it and some of them won't. And I don't know right now which ones I would recommend because I haven't seen the whole and we haven't had that conversation. So, you know, hiring a person now that may, you know, either we've prejudged our priorities without giving other folks a chance to make their case or we're putting someone in a position to get laid off. And I think, you know, if you want to identify a sum of money, and, you know, no question, you can get more done with your own employee than with a contract, but you can get some done. And maybe there's, you know, whether it's trees being cut or I don't know if people can be hired on a contract basis. My reluctance isn't against getting the work done. My reluctance is against making a commitment to a person that we hire and provide benefits and now has a job that we may or may not be able to make that commitment to them over the long run, once we set our full priorities. If there's an interim need, while that's being discussed, and, you know, 8,000, Jeff said 20, maybe we could allocate 12 and we could figure out where we could get that from. And do something like that, I think then you're, but I don't want to just say we gave them money if it's not useful to them either. So, I mean, that's where I'm stuck, is that, you know, there's, you know, I don't mean to be hysterical, but we could bring Tony in and he could talk about opiates and how they'd been running short of a police officer for a year. And, you know, he could, I'm sure we have an immediate need for another police officer. And on and on.
So at this point, I would love to just, I guess, invite you all, if you were able to, you know, come back with a more concrete number about if we were going to contract out, take care of the backlog. You know, I guess I would invite, knowing what that is and then having a conversation about that in the meanwhile, so that at least in that way, we can be more ready. That's just information, so, you know, that's hopefully an easy thing to ask for. But, yeah, Jack?
I'm especially interested in seeing a number for bringing someone in, not to hire someone as a permanent employee to start training them to fill this job, but what it would cost to hire a temporary employee to come in and do the inventory in October, which is, seems like that's a critical time. And that gives us a database for the rest of the budget season and for what the work is going to be needed for next year.
Yeah, go ahead, and then Connor?
There's a little confusion here. We did the inventory, the volunteers did the inventory. We spent a couple hundred hours probably walking the streets. So the inventory's done.
Talking about the branch sampling.
The branch sampling's a different matter.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
So basically, I heard the phrase earlier, the status of the ash borer. The status of the ash borer is unknown at this time. We know that we had an infestation at National Life and bugs have left there. That's all we know. Next spring, we will know exactly how bad it is. John indicated that it could be hundreds of trees. We don't know right now. So the branch sampling was done on trees that we identified this year as being suspect trees. You're not just going to go out and do a lot of branch sampling on other trees. That's just not going to happen because there's 450 of them out there on the street alone to look for this bug. What you need to do is you need to set up a system in the spring and somebody to run the system where you're monitoring with green traps, which are these sticky traps. You've seen the purple ones probably. These are green ones now that have a pheromone that attract the males. And you set them up in areas that you have suspected infestation. You'll know about these suspected infestation in the spring when the leaves come out because a lot of your trees will have missing leaves in the canopy. That's where you set up your traps. That's also where you start talking about where you're going to set up your trapped trees to remove some of the bugs. It's also going to be where you decide which trees need to come out now because they're infested and they need to be removed from the population before the adults emerge in May and June. Because if they get out, you've got a bigger problem, right? So it is exponential in that you have to be able to identify those trees in the spring. You need someone that's geared towards being able to do that, making the decisions to say, we need to cut this tree, this tree, this tree, get them to the marshaling area, which was mentioned earlier, because you don't want to leave those trees where they are. The bugs will continue to grow and emerge. Get them to the marshaling area, process them, sawmill, chipper, whatever, remove those guys from the population. That's how you slow the spread of this critter. If you don't do these things, if you don't have somebody on top of this, the critter gets the upper hand and you're behind the eight ball and it's going to be all, that's just the pattern. It's been done before in the country, we know it. We don't need to fall into the same mistakes, that's all.
And the adults emerge in May, so we need to have someone.
Remove the trees before that.
Before May.
Chip them, get that outer bark done, processed, destroyed. Burn it up, process the rest of the wood as firewood, give it to the low-income folks if they need it, whatever. There's all sorts of stuff you can do with the wood. But unless you start acting on these ideas.
Because is this something that can be shared with neighboring communities? Is this something that can be done regionally?
Marshaling area?
Or the person, staff?
We don't even have a marshaling area right now.
No, no, the staffing, the person.
We're going to have a full, there's going to be full-time need in this position here for this person to keep track of the 450 trees that are out on the streets, plus the 170 or so that are along the trails in Hubbard Park, plus the fact that North Branch Park hasn't been inventoried, Blanchard Park hasn't been inventoried. You don't know, there's more trees out there that haven't even been looked at. You need somebody to take charge and do that. And they have to be on staff, they have to be trained, they have to be able to do that. That's my two cents.
Yeah, Connor, go ahead.
So I really appreciate what Bill's saying about some difficult decisions ahead. At the same time, this body has spent hours and hours on this issue. So almost by default, I think we've identified it as a priority. You know, I'm convinced it's a real and immediate threat. I have a tough time looking at these guys who have spent so many hours in a volunteer capacity. They're almost employees as it is, not giving them more resources. So I think I'm with Jack. I'd like to see some more numbers at the next meeting, to see some options that we could review there. I'm not ready to shut the door on a position.
Also, I mean, just thinking out loud here, but I wonder if this kind of a service is something that could even be put out to bid to arborists? Like if we can hire someone on a contract to do this for us for the year? Or to, however many, anyway, I'm just thinking of that. Okay, so for now.
We squeeze them into the next agenda?
Yeah, I think so.
Straightforward sort of report of this kind of detailed task and cost and?
Rosie?
I was actually, just scheduling-wise, well, I have some thoughts about the next agenda. Maybe this is not the right time to.
No, fair enough. Speaking of the agenda, actually, I mean, if we're, well, are we, did anybody want to make a motion? Or do you, should we just move on for now? Okay. Thank you, yeah, so looking forward to more numbers. And about the next item, so theoretically, we would be taking up the parklets at this point, but it is 10, 15. And I would love to push, I don't think that's an urgent issue, so if we can make the 12th the first reading and then push the second reading to September 26th, that I think would be useful. Yes, Rosie?
I was going to even suggest pushing it further because this is something, I mean, we need to know this winter what we're doing, but.
Yeah.
Could figure it out in October.
26th and 1st, yeah.
Yeah, 26th and October 10th. I think that, you mean for the parklet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. And then the ash boers can take the place of the parklet on the 12th. Isn't it great that we have that here? I'm so happy.
That is actually incredibly helpful.
Thanks, Mary.
I'm sorry, where are you moving parklets?
Yeah, we're going to move parklets to the 26th and then the 10th.
Or the secondary, there's a fancy box of markers.
Yes, these are the markers.
Do you want to?
Why don't you move to October 2nd?
Is that a, is that a dry erase? Is that a dry erase marker?
No, you got to use it, you got to use.
Almost going to talk about the ash borer for.
Boy, you almost did it.
Woo, Jack. Close call.
You can even erase the permanent ones.
So I.
You're going to be messing with Jamie here, so. Just so you know.
Let the record reflect, it was Jack that almost wrote permanent marker.
And October 2nd?
That's now the 3rd, by the way.
Oh, yeah. It's October.
But the October 10th would be the.
September 26th and then October 10th.
Okay.
October 3rd is the special meeting.
We'll make the handwriting all consistent later.
Jamie, well, she's.
Great, thank you, awesome.
That's really great.
All right, so kicking the parklet for now. I think the only thing left to do is to appoint the VLCT voting rep. Are you all aware of what the VLCT is?
Well, I feel like we should probably do like 20 seconds on that.
Vermont League of Cities and Towns is a member association of all the municipalities in the state. It does, it provides insurances, legal advice, technical advice on all sorts of issues. But one of the other things is also represents towns and cities at the legislature and they adopt a municipal policy each year. Full disclosure, I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the League, so just so you know. And I was chair of one of the policy committees, the Water Resources Committee this year. And the, so the membership votes to adopt this policy then, just not unlike what we do here. And then the staff represents that interest at the legislature. So each community is given one official voting rep. Anyone can attend, but only one, you know, you have the card that you raise. And the city council designates that voting rep. city council designates that voting rep. It's great if it's a council member, has been on several occasions in the past. I will be there, although it is on October 3rd, that's why I wasn't going to be at the night meeting, because it's a two-day event, and I was going to stay over with, because the league board is a thing at night. But, be that as it may, so I can do it, and I have done it, so you're covered, but if one of you would like to do it, it's an interesting thing, and then there's training sessions the next day, so...
I've done it, it's pretty fun. I would like to do it.
So it is a daytime thing.
I'm curious, how, how do we, as a city council, decide what positions to take on the platform proposals? Because I assume that we don't just pick someone and say, go do whatever you want.
I distributed what they sent me to everybody. Nobody sent me any compliments when I was the voter, but I sent it to everybody.
Yeah.
Did we send out...
I've gone every year but one.
It's attached to the agenda item.
So the draft policy is there, so in year, we've done it a million different ways. We have, in fact, sent people with a do what you think is right. We have some years said, go and support the league policy as drafted. Other years, we've actually had it on the agenda and gone through it, and taken, you know, not, not starting every line, but if there were issues that people said, no, we want it, you know, we direct our staff to ask, seek an amendment. There is a process where towns and cities can send in proposed amendments, and those get voted on, and it's clear that some select boards do go through them with fine-toothed comb. So you can do it however you want, you have till October.
And you can go and not be the rep.
Yeah, you can go and not be the rep and discuss, you just can't vote.
Right. Yeah, I've even just gone to the, to the conference. That's valuable as well.
And that's changed, though. The one thing that's different this year is that there, the Wednesday, the 3rd, is the voting day, and there's just a couple of things there, and then there's like board stuffing and dinner and stuff at night, and then the next day is the, sort of the conference thing. We used to cram them all together. So, if you go on the 3rd, that's great, but you don't go on the 4th. And the city, of course, covers the registration cost and costs for anybody who wants to go, including staying over if you want to.
Where is it this year?
I want to say South Burlington at the...
Is it, because it alternates, it was down and...
Is it the Doubletree Hilton, which used to be the Sheraton, so the one out by the interstate?
I believe that's right.
Yeah.
It's, it's really, there's so many good workshops and good discussions, it's really worth...
It really looks very interesting.
Just the one day is really worth it.
I've heard that Ashley wants to be the voting rep. Does anybody else have any interest in being the voting rep?
I'll be gone, because I'm not going to fight you for it.
No, no one else? Okay, I think we do need to vote on that.
Yeah, I have a little bit, but I'm not going to get in your way, so do it.
Oh. By all means, go.
I do have a request, though. There are some things in here that I find particularly problematic surrounding mental health, substance use and abuse, and Department of Corrections, that I would, I would like to raise with the council, so I'm wondering if we could just put it on, on the agenda, not necessarily go through it line by line, but if people could just raise their issues with it. Because there were some things that kind of really stood out to me, and a couple of things that have come up that I've been following over the years.
It's a fairly conservative group.
Can I just say, I got in a fight with the, the ED at the time, a few years ago, because they were against the equal pay bill.
Oh, yeah.
Who better to go? Okay.
I nominate Ashley Hill to be the voting representative for the city of Montpelier to this year's VLCT convention.
Second. For the discussion?
Vote your conscience.
All in favor, please say aye.
It's never a problem.
Great. Yeah, if, I, what is this happening, it's in October?
October 3rd. It's Wednesday and Thursday, that's why...
Want to put something on the...
The 3rd is now the date of our special election.
Oh, that's right.
And honestly, I guess it's just more of the kind of thing, if there's...
You don't need 26 to talk about it?
Right, oh, I see, yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
It doesn't need to be like anything in-depth, like I just, I have some things that I would like to...
Yeah, we can stick it on the end.
Find out if everyone's on board.
Right. Sure. Okay, great. Thank you for doing that. All right, so I think we are up to...
We'll take care of it.
Council reports. Rosie, would you like to start?
Yep. So I was approached by Dan Jones of the Sustainable Montpelier Coalition about being part of a group that they are putting together of landowners around the rivers in downtown to start to talk about what are some things that they can do to work together, or kind of having more of a, at least talking to your neighbor, understanding of, of what other people are doing, so that might influence your own decision. And, so I was approached about kind of attending some of those meetings, and I'm interested, but I also wanted to come back to the council and see if this is something that you would like me to attend as a council representative, or with just kind of a private citizen hat on. And I want to be really clear in understanding, you know, what my role is, yeah.
Are you interested in, I mean, as a baseline, you're interested in participating in some way, or no?
Yes, so my understanding is there's a few meetings in September. Generally, I'm really conservative about my ability to commit to stuff outside of work and family and this, but I think that I can make the time to, to attend several meetings. So, and it's a topic I'm really interested in, and I think that one of my skills is sort of thinking about all this, you know, how do things interact with each other, and it, it interests me. So, I would be happy to do it, but I also, if someone else is really interested, I wanted to give other folks the opportunity as well.
I think you should go and say that you're representing the council.
Okay.
Agreed.
Yeah. Great, all right. I was going to say, if you would prefer to represent yourself, if that's somehow easier, then that's fine with me too, but I might have been effectively outvoted just now.
I trust your judgment.
I think we all said do, I mean, I think it's the same thing, is that we're comfortable...
Either way.
But sometimes, if you have your personal hat on, it can be very useful insight.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, I won't make any commitments on the part of the city, but I just want to have a better sense of whether I'm, who I'm representing, so that's helpful.
But I'd love to hear a report about it.
Sure, of course.
Cool, thank you, Rosie.
The only thing I have to say, in case that she's not, doesn't want to put herself forward too much, I want to recommend my friend and seatmate, Ashley's op-ed piece in The Times/Argus today on domestic violence. I thought it was great. Anyone out there who hasn't read it, should.
Thanks, Jack. I want to thank everybody who came out to vote in our election. I saw the email come out from John Odom that we needed more people, because we had so many folks show up to vote, and that's how democracy works. So I, I appreciate everyone's efforts in making that happen, and I particularly really appreciate city staff and all of their efforts to, to make it go as smoothly as possible, and those lines were impressive.
Yes.
It was great, it was really good to see.
Donna?
Oh, you start over here.
Sure.
I was going to hunt for the, one of the groups that I've just joined on my own is the Water Basin, a Clean Water Act, and we're dealing with the Holonouski area. Berlin Pond is in there under some very interesting ways, and already has some red marks about vulnerability and risk, but this is good. But the Department of DEC, Department of Employment?
Environmental Conservation.
There you go. The water people, they have actually decided that they should start identifying pristine water areas, whether it's a pond, a river, and label them and protect them.
What?
Now, they didn't do that for Berlin Pond, but doesn't mean we can't keep nurturing and get Berlin Pond up there. It's an incredible table of just how much trouble we're having, not just with runoff from farmers, but things are showing up in the water, antibodies, I mean, it's just amazing, in the water, in the sampling of the soil around the water, and it's very, very interesting, and the report is like yay, but I could email, and drafts keep changing, but it's really been very interesting. The other thing, it just, I mentioned it before, but I will be gone, I'll leave the day after, I'm sure, our late 26th council meeting. I leave on the 27th for Sweden, and I come back on the 9th, the day before. So I hope I'm not late flying in. Have a good time on the 3rd.
It may seem silly, but, you know, I just really want to thank Sue and Bill and everybody who was involved in that goat story.
Yeah.
You know, if you think about the thousands and thousands of dollars people would pump into, like, marketing to get such exposure for like a city our size, I've had countless people from all over the country, even in Ireland, reach out and say, what a fantastic like city that is to live in, so I say it with all sincerity, like, great job on that one.
And the names, what could be better? There's Fader and Ginsberg.
They're not eating enough.
They're not eating enough?
They're not eating enough.
Yeah, well, that's, we may have to stop, because they're not actually, we just legalized the substance, am I helping?
Get more goats.
As usual, join me tomorrow morning, Thursday, at Baguio's, 8:30 to 9:30, to talk about
whatever you like. It's been going really well, and I continue to enjoy it. And I want to tell a very brief story about a whiteboard. Here in Montpelier, early when I was here, I signed up to be a substitute teacher at the high school, and the first day I walked into the classroom, it was empty. I took a marker and wrote Mr. Hutchison on the smart whiteboard, and then looked at the marker. And after that boneheaded move, I was really proud of myself, that I thought hard, and looked around the room, and found the alcohol-based hand sanitizer.
All right.
And wiped it right off. So no one knew until right now.
So in light of that, it just might be wise for us to maybe take that down, so it's not necessarily here in the, in the off-season.
I mean, we have hand sanitizer somewhere. It's okay.
Maybe we just eliminate the permanent, can we just eliminate the permanent marker?
Or just turn it around, or, do you know what I mean, like...
Are you afraid we'll get extra comments?
Yeah, maybe, right?
Well, then we won't necessarily have to leave the...
Or any of the markers.
Any other markers, you know, around.
Yeah, okay, I'll talk to Jamie, we'll figure that out.
In my office.
Put it on the city's webpage.
Yeah.
Put a picture of it on the city's webpage and take it out of the room between meetings.
Oh, it could be a Facebook post every week.
That would be a great Facebook post. Okay, all right, team, I have a few updates, so bear with me. First of all, yesterday, I got to hang out with the Trash Tramps, and that was just delightful fun. I would encourage you all to, if you can, find a Tuesday afternoon at 2 o'clock, meet up with the Trash Tramps at the Senior Center, and then they walk around town picking up garbage, and it was a great time, so shout out to them. That's thing number one. Thing number two, I just want to relay that I had some comments from people about the recertification of the Marshfield Dam, that we might be looking into being a party to the certificate of public good for that, because Montpelier has, is potentially affected, you know, as to the, the health of that dam, so just a heads up about that. Third thing, one of the things that came up in our discussions with the new hotel proposal was the, the Capitol Plaza, Sheras, et cetera, wanted us to check in with you all about the possibility of doing some kind of a deal on water rates, and so I just want to ask, is there any interest on giving them a water rates deal? And you can tell me now, or you can tell me later, or not. I know what Ashley's response is. Is anybody, how about that, is anybody interested in talking about water rates?
I think that would be really not...
Okay, I'm just doing my due diligence.
She just honored a commitment.
I just, I had to, thank you.
I mean, if you and Bill have a different perspective...
Our answer was, we don't think so, but we'll ask.
But we'll ask, that's what we, that's what we said, so I'm asking.
So we, she kept her word.
Okay, that's, that's it, that's all I needed to do, thank you. Okay, great. And that's, that's another thing. So now there's a couple other things that I wanted, I'm really excited about, that I want to talk about super briefly. I think I've sent you all a copy of the potential language for a charter change, so I'm very interested in your feedback on that. I mean, we have some opportunity to talk about that more formally, I don't see it on the September 12th, oh, wait, no, it's on the September 12th.
Right.
So next, next time, if, so I have some ideas of ordinances that I would like to have conversations about.
Charter change or ordinance?
I'm sorry, there's some ordinance, there's some ordinances that I think...
If the charter change were successful, then...
Right, then we should have language.
That this might allow?
No, one, just to put it very briefly, my interpretation of the, the proposed charter change language is that it's just an exploration of the, what it means for a public welfare. So I just want you to know that there are three things that I'm thinking about for potential ordinances, and I want to invite you, if you have ideas of what ordinances might be enabled by that charter change language, I would love to get your, your feedback about that, potentially before the 12th, so that we can...
I'd just like us to be really aware of public meeting law, and maybe we should post what you shared in terms of the potential charter changes or something. If we're all going to be providing you feedback, I just don't want to do that outside of a public venue.
We'll put it in the weekly memo.
Okay, that sounds good.
Sure, great, thank you. So, first thing, I mean, is the, a plastic bag either ban or tax, I mean, that's sort of what spawned this. But I also want to explore the possibility of a citywide contract for compost, and that could potentially go through the Central Vermont Solid Waste District with an agreement with them. So, you know, they would explore, you know, putting out an RFP, et cetera, so if, if you're interested in having more conversation about that, that's something that I would love to put on a upcoming agenda, more specifically. Is there interest in talking about that?
Yes.
Okay, I would, I'm not interested in, you know, taking up more staff time particularly, but I don't think this would take up that much.
Or at least right now.
Right, well, anyway, yeah, but we can, we can talk about that. So I'm seeing general interest in talking about citywide compost, so that's another thing, and then there are some energy code ordinances that I'm, I'm really interested in. I'll tell you more about that later, so. That is it for me. Thank you for bearing with me through all of those points.
That's why you ended the meeting at 10:15, I understand. I'm sorry, Ann, I didn't get it. Did you send it with your city email, or your personal email?
With the city email, and I think you even wrote back, thanks, but I can send it to you again.
Because I'm searching forward here, he said it was August 15th?
If I'm, if I'm thinking of the right thing.
Sounds about right.
Yeah, it should be about then, let me, I can, I can tell you.
Well, I've been having trouble, and Seth tried to work on it, but now he's jammed me out of Google Drive, so...
Oh, no. All right, John, I think you're up.
I'd just say, thank you, Ashley, for the kind words about the election. However, long lines at the polling place are a sign, in fact, that, that democracy is not working.
Well, it was unexpectedly long.
And so does a desperate call for help there at the end of the day. So, all of which is to say, this is the second primary in a row where the crowds have been much bigger than expected. So I think, for the first time maybe in our, forever, Montpelier voters have discovered the primary, and I think it's, it's here to stay, which means, I think that's going to be the last time we follow the tradition and have it down here. Lost Nation isn't going to be happy, but...
Yeah, they can put you in.
But I think that's the last, last election of any kind we're going to have in this room.
At least with the current administration issues.
No, with, I think forever.
And the machines didn't work either, it's like, wow.
We had, we had machines jam up, but there was, there was a particular reason for that, and I know how to fix them next time. Yes, at one point, I called out that we were moving the hand count, which was something I never thought I'd hear myself say, but we got past it.
Long time counting. And Donna, it is August 15th that I send it to you. If you need it again.
Yeah, I was not finding it, but...
I just have one minor thing, it's not, it was going to pass, but Donna reminded me of something, which is, some of you, especially those who were on last year, remember that we had long, prolonged discussions with the state about Berlin Pond, and whether we should